Madam Chair, we're live.
Madam Chair, we're live. Madam Chair, we're live. Madam Chair, we're live. Madam Chair.
Does anyone not awake in the room?
Oh, my God.
We're good? Okay. Well, good morning to the room and welcome, everyone, to the Napa County Board of Supervisors meeting. I'll call this meeting of April 22nd, 2025 to order. May I have roll call, please?
Vice Chairman Manfree.
Here.
Supervisor Ramos.
Here.
Supervisor Alessio.
Present.
Supervisor Gallagher.
Here.
Chair Cottrell.
Here. And I will ask everyone to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. And today, I wanted to make a note, this is CSAC Legislative Conference Week. That is when the State Association of California Counties gets together in Sacramento. And so, many of my colleagues will be heading to that this week and leaving this afternoon. So, my goal is to have us be able to do an effective and brief meeting. And so, I'm going to be aiming for a 12:00 to 12:30 stop. And I want to say thank you to several department heads who agreed to move their items to our May meeting, so they would have some more time then. And this way, we will be able to give time to the items that are on the agenda today. But I just wanted to set that expectation. So, with that, we will now get to meet Amelia, our Pet of the Week. Good morning. Here we have Amelia, and I'd love for you to introduce yourself, too.
Hi, my name is Kelly. So, this morning, we have Amelia. She is a one-year-old female pit bull. She just turned a year old. She came to us as a surrender because the people were moving and could not take her with them. She is super sweet, super social, loves cuddles, loves pets. She would make for a great partner to go running with and hiking with. She loves other dogs. And she is very treat motivated, so would be great to do some training with. She just needs to learn some manners and some boundaries, but she is ready to learn. She's very, very sweet and could make someone very happy, make a family very happy. And if you come down and adopt her this week, she is free. We will be waiving her fee for the adoptions this week.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Kelly. And Amelia is a sweetie. And again, her adoption fees will be waived this week, so please come visit her at the shelter. All right. Before we move to the proclamation, Supervisor Ramos, this is where you're supposed to remind me that I already have a dog. Yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you. All right. And now, we will move to our two proclamations. Before we actually have those read, I will ask for any public comment on the proclamations this morning. And if there is none, I will ask my colleagues for a motion to approve the two proclamations first.
I'll move through.
Okay, great. There's a motion by Supervisor Gallagher and a second by Supervisor Ramos. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So, Supervisor Ramos will be reading the proclamation recognizing Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And do we have anyone in the audience who is here for that proclamation? Wonderful. Tracy, if you want to come up to the podium with Supervisor Ramos, and then you can read your comments as well.
Thank you so much, Chair, for asking me to present this proclamation. Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April 2025. I'm going to be reciting a few of the recitals, and then we'll invite Tracy Lamb from News to make a few comments. Whereas in 2025, News Domestic Violence and Sexual Abuse Services is commemorating 43 years of service to survivors of domestic violence and sexual abuse in Napa County, having opened as the county's rape crisis center in 2010 to provide safety to those experiencing sexual abuse. Whereas in 2001, the National Sexual Violence Resource Center launched the first Sexual Assault Awareness Month campaign. And in 2009, the Obama administration officially recognized April as National Sexual Assault Awareness Month, enshrining our country's commitment to broadening education of sexual violence, promoting consent, ending victim blaming, and showing support for victims and Whereas by observing April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, we show that our community is committed to supporting survivors and working toward the prevention of sexual violence across generations. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that this Board of Supervisors, County of Napa, State of California, on this 22nd day of April 2025, does hereby join News, advocates, and communities across the country in taking action to prevent sexual violence. We recognize April 2025 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Napa County, and we urge the community to join in the effort, not only in April, but all year long, to be part of the effort to end sexual violence. And now, it is a pleasure to present this to Tracy Lamb, Executive Director of News, who will tell us how we can commemorate in April awareness around sexual assault.
Thank you, Supervisor Ramos. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman Cottrell and all the members. I'm Tracy Lamb, the Executive Director of News Domestic Violence and Sexual Abuse Services. And although none of us want to think that sexual assault occurs, and it unfortunately does way more often than I think most people realize, News is Napa's dedicated rape crisis center, providing confidential support, advocacy, and resources to survivors of sexual assault and abuse. We observe Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and this year's theme is Together We Act, United We Change. And we emphasize communities working together to prevent sexual violence through collaboration, prevention education, and uplifting survivors' voices. Our community partners, who we work with very closely, are the County of Napa, District Attorney's Office for forensic interviewer investigators, law enforcement officers from around the community, in an effort to hold perpetrators accountable and to meet the needs of survivors. The News Sexual Assault Advocates role is unique in that it is our sole purpose to provide support to survivors, and they are sometimes children, youth, adults, and elders. These crimes can happen to anyone, and how individuals cope and heal is as individual as those who experience it. Our saves advocates are there, often for years, as survivors move through their trauma, listening, empowering, and believing them. We invite you and the entire community to join News in our efforts through an event that we're holding called Walk a Mile Napa Valley, which challenges participants to step into another person's shoes to tell that story, supported by Kaiser Permanente, the Napa Valley College, and the Monarch Justice Center. This event sends a powerful message to survivors. I believe you, I stand with you, and you're not alone. The event takes place at the Napa Yard on May 4th from 2:00 to 4:00, and throughout April, provides outreach across the valley and creates a window display at the Napa County District Attorney's Office. So, I invite all of you to join us in that journey and help us end sexual violence. And if anyone you know has been a victim of sexual violence, we're available 24/7 in English and Spanish. Our number is 255 NEWS, and everything is confidential, so please give us a call if you need help. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And if we could ask you to wait for a moment, and let's gather in the well and do a photo with Tracy.
With your partner. Thank you.
Supervisor Alessio is distributing the Walk a Mile event. That will be Sunday, May 4th at 2:00 p.m. So, now, I will ask Supervisor Alessio to read the proclamation acknowledging Mental Health Awareness Month. And I want to ask if there's anyone in the room today to -- wonderful, to be here as part of that proclamation.
Hi, I'm Marlo. Thank you, Chair Cottrell, for asking me to read this proclamation. This is near and dear to my heart, and I know to many others. The proclamation, Board of Supervisors, Napa County, California, Mental Health Awareness Month, May 2025. Whereas each May, we raise awareness about the importance of mental health and its impact on the well-being of Napa County community, including children, adults, and families. And whereas, mental health challenges are one of the most common health conditions in California, affecting at least two in five adults and children, impacting both the person experiencing mental health challenges and the persons who care and love the person facing the challenges. And whereas, from July 1st, 2024, to April 7th, 2025, 7,633 students in Napa County received a universal mental health screening funded by the Behavioral Health Student Services Act through a partnership between Napa County Office of Education and Napa Health and Human Services Agency Behavioral Health Division. And whereas, Napa County's Health and Human Services Agency Behavioral Health Division served over 1,663 unique clients in fiscal year 2023-2024, ensuring that those served received high-quality mental health services. And whereas, it is critical that we create a community in Napa County where in everyone feels comfortable seeking support and prioritizing their mental health and well-being. And whereas we support the shared vision of community in which anyone affected by mental illness can get the support and care they need to live a fulfilling life. And whereas, we encourage friends, relatives, neighbors, and all in Napa County and our community to learn the signs, support those who are struggling, and assist them in seeking services available. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that this Board of Supervisors, County of Napa, State of California, on this 22nd day of April 2025, does hereby proclaim May 2025 is Mental Health Awareness Month in Napa County. We call upon all members of this community, private businesses, nonprofit groups, clubs, and associations, to be an ally for individuals with mental illness and take action to strengthen the mental health of our community. Above all, let us collectively ensure that all children and adults experiencing mental health challenges are treated with the compassion, respect, understanding they deserve. I'd like to present this to Marlo with our Napa County Behavioral Health Division. Marlo?
Do we'd like to say a few words? Sure. Very brief. I know you're short on time.
Good morning. My name's Marlo Simmons. I'm an Assistant Deputy Director with Health and Human Services Behavioral Health Division. I'm really honored to accept this on behalf of the department, and really just want to acknowledge how important and supportive this body has been to the issue of mental health, and appreciate you shining a light on this issue, which touches, as Supervisor Alessio said, so many people in our community, not been in Napa very long, but I've been really touched and in awe of what a great safety net this community has built. So, thank you again for this.
Wonderful. Thank you, Marlo, and since you're -- especially because you're new, let's do a photo, okay?
Yeah, it's coming out. It's not, it's staying. It's low. Thank you very much. Thank you so much, Chair. Thank you so much. Which is great. Thank you so much. It's breaking up the glass. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you, everyone, for helping us to observe those two proclamations. Next, we will be moving to our consent calendar items. First up, we have items 5A and 5B from our special district. Do we have any board comments or items to pull off the special district consent calendar? And is there anyone in the room or on the phone who would like to make a comment? Good morning, Ms. Malin.
Good morning. Yes, I was wondering if item A, groundwater, the Napa County Groundwater Sustainable Agency, if item A could be pulled.
Item 5A? Yes. Okay. Do you have a comment on that, that you'd like to make? Okay, I can go ahead and pull that item. And so, then, we will have the public hearing on that item, and if you'd like to make a comment on it, you may do so at this point. So, why don't we go ahead? Let's do this. We can take -- if I can entertain a motion on the remaining item, which is 5B.
So moved. Second.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. So, 5B passes unanimously. And now, I will ask for public comment on 5A. Ms. Malin, did you want to speak to that item?
Is it possible to speak after someone talks about it? Okay, my question is, the word temporary, I don't understand why it's temporary. To have temporary access to a monitoring device, I mean, I just wanted to hear more about that.
Okay. Thank you for that. Is there a staff person who could come speak to that? Ms. Crosby, thank you.
Yes, it's temporary. First of all, it's not access to a monitoring device, it's access to a monitoring location on private property. So, and the fact that it's temporary is only because a private property owner is not going to grant access generally for an indefinite period of time. I forget how many years it is, but several years' access. So, it's not about access to equipment.
And the point, I think, being is that this is where a landowner says, "I'm fine with this," as opposed to some sort of forever permission.
Exactly. It just puts some boundaries around it, and ultimately, allowing this item to go forward will allow us to conduct monitoring at a site that we didn't have access to last year. So, ultimately, this means more monitoring of river and creek sites.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Crosby.
Sure.
So, with that, I will bring this item back to the board, ask for any comments, or if none, a motion. I'll move this item.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Supervisor Manfree, thank you. And second by Supervisor Alessio, thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will now move on to our regular consent calendar, which is items 6A through 6AG. We'll first take -- is there any public comment on these items, either in the room or on the phone? Okay. Are there any items that board members wish to pull?
No items to pull, just a quick comment on B and D, or C and D, excuse me.
Okay.
But I'm happy to make a motion to prove that there are no items that anybody else would like to pull.
So, there's a motion. Why don't we do this? Let's do a motion and a second, and then I'll open it up for any comments.
Perfect. Thank you.
So, Supervisor Alessio has made the motion. Is there a second? Okay. Supervisor Gallagher has a second. There's a motion and a second, and at this point, I can open up for a discussion or comment. So, go ahead, Supervisor Alessio.
Thank you. It's just a really quick comment. I just want to acknowledge and thank Amber Twitchell for joining the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council. I'm on this council, and she brings, you know, decades of experience with -- from On the Move and Voices, to be that representative for youth that are at risk. And then, also, in terms of the Juan Pablo Torres Padilla on the Napa Valley Bitners, you know, minority revenue, general lodging business, the Napa Valley Ted District, I'd like to welcome to that, too. This is one of the situations where we have so many, you know, people in our community with great skills and experience that bring it forward to serve the public. So, I just want to thank those, too. That's all.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, then, I will ask for a vote. All those in favor of passing items 6A through 6G, 6AG on the consent calendar, say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this point, we will move to item seven, public comment. Anyone in the room who wishes to speak on items today that are not on the agenda, you can do so at this time. And if you can state your name, and then we will aim to keep it to the three-minute timer above.
Just a couple of things on that item 5A. I don't understand temporary access. And I know that Jameson already came up, but is it okay?
Ms. Malin, I'm going to suggest since that, we've already had that item on the agenda, I'm going to suggest that maybe you and Jameson could connect outside of this.
Fine. Thank you. Okay, so, in Napa County, Napa County is a biological hotspot on the planet. And over and over again, myself and biologists and scientists that I've worked with since 2000, doing long-term biological monitoring of the Napa River, we've discovered new species here. And it took 20 years to get a caddis fly named. Actually, it's named after me, just recently. And it took 20 years to get a caddis fly named. Actually, it's named after me, just recently, in the last two years. But it's not seen anywhere else in the world. And we found it in four locations. One was on Milliken Creek. And we had to replicate the find by collecting it again, which is the way it happens in the world with species or many other scientific issues. You can't just say it's true. You have to replicate it. So, we replicated it, and a caddis fly expert studied it further and then wrote a paper. And then, actually, there's caddis fly experts in the world. And everybody got excited about it. But the point being is that Napa County has a rare and endangered and species of concern threatened. And I don't think there's enough recognition to that. While I love the pet of the week, don't get me wrong, I'm a dog person myself, I think it's more important to recognize where we live and to protect the endangered and threatened species here, which is lacking, because we continue to deforest for more vineyards. And we cut down habitat, thousands of acres a year, and, you know, hundreds of thousands and millions of trees since we started doing this. So, I know we have a tree issue here, and of course, across the world. So, with climate change and everything going on, we need to protect more of our habitats, and our trees are very important. Habitats are where these species are. And I think Napa County can do a better job of protecting endangered, threatened, and species of concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malin, and congratulations on the caddis fly. That's cool. All right, is there other comment in the room or on the phone? Okay. Then I will move us to item eight, board reports and announcements. And I will check my lights here. I've got Supervisor Gallagher, and then Supervisor Alessio, and then Supervisor Manfree.
Great, thank you, and good morning Chair. Just a couple of thank yous. I wanted to acknowledge CRC and their celebration last week of childcare providers and early educators. They had some beautiful awards and a great evening. And just wanted to say congratulations to all of those who were present and all of those who, who were acknowledged. And also just say thank you to CRC for putting that event together. Also, the Napa Valley Grape Growers and Vittners sponsored the afternoon in the vineyards. I know a lot of us were, were able to do that. I visited Fire Tree Vineyard and met with the Jimenez family. It was, it was really fun and informative. Just wanted to, you know, make the public aware that these are really great opportunities to get out in the vineyards and, and talk to growers and farmers. And so anytime that opportunity arises, please take, take advantage of that. I also wanted to just say thank you to Rex Stoltz and Caleb Mosley. They made a presentation recently at our local governments meeting and talked about the state of the industry. Really, really important information and, and, you know, critical that electeds are aware of what's happening on the ground. And I just did want to encourage growers and vittners to reach out to each of us. We're all trying to meet with industry partners in our districts. And to please, you know, reach out to us if you'd like to meet. We do want to hear your stories and hear more about what's actually happening on the ground for you. And that's it for me.
Thank you Supervisor Gallagher. Supervisor Alessio.
Thank you. And that was a wonderful event that CRC Community Resource for Children put together. I just want to say Supervisor Gallagher did an exceptional job being the keynote speaker for that event. It's very, very well done. I want to also thank the City of Napa Park and Rec Department for putting on a great Earth Day. Supervisor Manfree and I were able to be there, along with many other people. But once again, it's a big lift to put something like that together. And it was just a great day focusing on sustainability and renewable energy, just all things that are, are good for, for Mother Earth. In terms of what's coming up, as we just said, gave the proclamation for Mental Health Month, which is May, there's a couple of dates here I want to share for upcoming events. There's a, for those who are survivors of a loved one who's committed suicide, there's a support group that's being started by Denise Boullou, who's a licensed social worker. And that's going to start on May 6. If you'd like more information, please let me know. Additionally, Mentis is going to have a, which focuses on behavioral health, mental health, they're going to have a bilingual paint and taste event for youth ages 12 to 24. That's going to be on May 10. And RSVP is needed for that. And then third, Mentis, that's been championing the QPR, which is Question, Persuade, and Refer, for those who are struggling with behavioral health issues or potentially suicidal. They are continuing that training here at the Napa County Health and Human Services at the Napa Valley Library, May 27. And everyone is welcome to attend that. And then last, the Mentis is hosting a community conversation with Brandon Staglin, co-founder of One Mind on May 29. And there's more information on the Mentis website on that, and that requires RSVP. That's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you Supervisor Alessio. Supervisor Manfree.
There is truly a lot going on in this community. And yeah, I also want to give a shout out to the people in the community who ran Earth Day. It was a really lovely event, well-attended, the weather was beautiful. And today is actual Earth Day, so happy Earth Day, everyone. I also wanted to say that there is a, a couple of upcoming events, the Mentis event this Saturday that Liz mentioned, and there's the same time from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday, April 26, an Indigenous community event led by Wapo and Asatzi, Pomo, Aloni, and Mewak, members of our community. And that will feature dancers, vendors, and activities. It's from, again, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. this Saturday at Napa Valley College. So, that's a great opportunity to learn. And I also wanted to say that I've had a number of conversations about golden mussel invasions in the last week. And I've talked to people at Circle Oaks, residents of Berriessa Highlands, one of our game wardens, a boat inspector out at the lake, and also Captain John Thompson from the Sheriff's Office. And there is a lot of concern. So, I'd like to make a referral to staff to ask that the CEO work with the county council's office to bring back a draft ordinance to help prevent the introduction of invasive mussels at Berriessa. And I believe we may already have draft language. I'm happy to work with you on that. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Manfree. Supervisor Ramos.
Thank you so much. Just to report out of some things that have happened, as I said before, we were welcomed a, a few of our colleagues from around the state and some county administrators to tour our relocated correctional facility. And it was, while the finishing, last, last finishing touches are being put on right now, it really was impressive for everyone to see what we've been able to do. And not just the, the way in which we worked with BSCC, Bureau of Community Corrections, but also our, our financing and really how we've integrated staff into the development of the, of the plan and the layout. And everyone was very impressed. And there's a highlight reel on CSAC's Instagram page that you can check out. It talks a little bit about our, our facility for everyone to see. Next, I just wanted to report out, I'm not sure if all of my colleagues saw, I know Supervisor Alessio was there. We had asked our, a few of our advisory commissions to actually take the show on the road, because it's important to not just sit here at Napa, Maine, and make decisions and take input from here. And so that has been happening. So, we already did have the Commission on Aging that came to American Canyon. And a couple weeks ago, the Mental Health Board came, the Behavioral Health Board came to American Canyon. And so that was really, really great to see us go. That, that was a pre-COVID thing that we actually used to do. So, it's really good to, to see all the effort that staff puts into making sure that these meetings are mobile and that we get out into the community. Lastly, I had the opportunity to participate on, at the League of Women Voters, they had a, a meeting centered around transportation, all things transportation. And it was great because I, I got to give the bigger regional view from the MTC, A-BAG planning, down to NVTA, gave a presentation. We had American Canyon and the City of Napa there, and also the Bike Coalition. So, it was a great presentation. And we're going to do a redo of that same presentation in July. So, it was a pleasure to be able to see that the plan is working, that the regional investments are trickling down into the locals, and we are making great headway. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I have a couple of updates, but first I have to say, thanks to all of you. There's a lot of stuff happening in lots of different sectors. So, it's wonderful to get these reports. And no one is not busy. That's pretty clear. So, I wanted to first echo Supervisor Gallagher in thanking the Grape Growers and the Vittners for the presentation to NICLOG, the League of Governments. That was really informative and, and sobering and thinking about how we move forward in a collaborative fashion. And then I wanted to give a quick summary of my trip to Washington, DC, where I was there with our legislative analyst, Andrew Myes. We were wanting to talk with legislators and agencies about wildfire prevention work and the importance of it in the county. And we were also able to partner with the Napa Valley Vittners, who do an advocacy trip there every year. And so, we asked Michelle Novy, who's here this morning, to join us on our day of meetings. And then we were able to join her and her team on their meetings. And we had, I think it was 12 meetings over three days, so it was very busy. And we were really making the point that our wildfire prevention program here in the valley is a great model of public and private and nonprofit collaboration. And that prevention work is cost-effective. It saves federal dollars, and that we have measurable outcomes. So, we had some good conversations, and we look forward to seeing where those conversations will go. And I'm really happy to hear about all the fun stuff that happened outdoors in the valley while it was gone. So, with that, I will then move us to our next item this morning, which is our, we will go to item, we're going to take item 11A before 10A. So, we will go to the special district item to receive a presentation on a potential rate and fee structure to fund the management and implementation of Napa County Groundwater Sustainability Agency and Sustainability Plan.
Madam Chair, I thought you were taking 11A first, which is the.
Okay, so I skipped, you had already skipped in my notes, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we will actually go ahead, I'm sorry, and take item 11A, which is to approve and offer, authorize our CEO to sign an agreement with Le Petite Elephant Nursery and preschool. So, with that, I will turn it over to CEO Alsop.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good morning. I'm going to skip my, I have a little bit of a preamble here, but I'm going to skip down to just say the state, and specifically, our county, along with the City of Napa, has a significant unmet need for affordable, additional affordable childcare, with a large gap between the number of children eligible for subsidized care and the number of spaces that are available for that, for those, for those families. Addressing this critical issue requires purposeful, timely, and collaborative action from all of us. And to help meet the need, both the City of Napa and the County Board of Supervisors allocated some money, federal money that we received some years ago, known as ARPA. And I think that shows both the City of Napa, the City of Napa's and the county's support for this issue in general. On the counties, for the county, we, we were funded about $3.8 million, if I have that correct. And that's, that was about 15% of the federal ARPA money that was allocated to our county. So, it was pretty substantial. That money went to six different recipients to create more than 300 new childcare spaces for infants ages zero to 24 months and low-income families. As you know, 1.2 million of that investment was awarded to Le Petite Elephant, Elephant, LPE Nursery. And it'll be known as LPE going forward in my comments, to support the purchase of a nearly 20,000-square-foot church building, which was intended to add an additional 100 affordable childcare spaces, providing essential support for working parents employed throughout the City of Napa. LPE is required as part of this effort to pay notable amount, a notable amount of fees being imposed by the city. This is a fairly common practice I want to note. The county provides, charges fee, various fees for things. This is how we collect money that then gets, is used to pay for the work that staff is doing to, to do all these things surrounding certain developments. So, this is a common practice, although the fees are notable. But the exacerbating issue is that they are coupled, these fees are coupled with an unplanned and regrettable but, but resolved lawsuit that was brought. This resulted in the applicant having to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees that were unplanned. And it's just really created this severe financial headwind for this particular project, which is really why we're here today. LPE has requested an additional $150,000 in a forgivable loan provided by the county to cover pre-construction expenses. It would include paying some of these permit fees while awaiting state grant funding and a small business loan that are both a few months delayed, while also allowing them to continue to provide subsidized childcare to all of the current working families they are serving here in Napa at their current facility. The county's, under this agreement, the county would lend the additional funding on the condition that the minimum childcare spots be maintained for an additional 15 months, which is proportional to the original agreement that a previous board agreed to, to the original 1.2 million loan, and all of its requirements, which are to maintain the additional childcare spots for a decade, 10 years. The money used for this is one-time in nature, provided by the Tobacco Master Settlement Agreement, or better known as MSA. So, today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions for your board. I know the applicant is actually in the audience. If you had any questions of her, the recommended action for your board today is the following. Number one, to approve the, approve and authorize providing an additional $150,000 in the form of a forgivable loan to LPE to significantly expand additional affordable childcare spaces here in the City of Napa. Number two, given the county's significant investment of taxpayer funds in this project, request the City of Napa, continue their consideration of all options available to them to provide some form of financial relief to the applicant, and really only to maximize the utility of the county's investment, the investment that your board is considering today, really to ensure that we're focusing every dollar that we can on what matters most, which is quality childcare spaces. And finally, taking the opportunity today with this item to read, to make a referral to staff, to, to my office, to work across the county, to identify other opportunities and partnerships that might be available to incentivize development of additional affordable infant and childcare spaces in unincorporated Napa County. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Alsop. Are there any questions for Mr. Alsop at this point? Supervisor Ramos.
Thank you so much. I do see that in the requested action, the $150,000 appropriation from the MSA, it says fund balance, that's from the corpus of the, of what's in the account?
Correct.
Okay. And do, is there a reason why we're not taking it out of the interest in current year payments? Why is it that we're taking it out of corpus? Is it, do we have enough flexibility to not take it out of corpus? Thank you, Ms. Craig.
The interest has already been fully committed to MSA grants for this year. And in fact, the board has authorized for the three-year program of that is also drawing down on the corpus, which has built up over the years. And so there is $9 million available that is prior year. And so there is $9 million available that is prior year interest earnings that have been added to the corpus.
And of that $9 million, how much is committed? Because we did a three-year program, so we have two years out. How much is committed of the $9 million?
We're drawing down about $1 million a year.
Okay. Okay, those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you for raising that. Other questions from the board at this point? If not, I will go ahead and open up the public comment and ask...
Chair, just I have a comment after.
Okay, certainly, yeah. Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Groupi.
Good morning, board and staff. I am here as the director of, I'm Michelle Groupi, I'm here as the director of the Community Leaders Coalition. We were very actively involved in advocating for support for childcare and affordable childcare when the ARPA money came to the county. And so just here again today to reaffirm our commitment to this project and to making sure that there is affordable childcare in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Groupi.
Good morning.
Good morning, board. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm Mary Kielubinski, Executive Director of Community Resources for Children, and I'm also here to support the amendment to the law of Le Petit. And in August 2022, it's been almost five years that the board had the wisdom and the vision to allocate the 3.8 million to childcare to sustain, expand, not only infant care but childcare in general. We live in a community that even for people who can pay cannot find infant childcare slots. So we do want to get to the point where infant childcare slots are quality and are accessible to everyone in our community. We also learned during the pandemic that when childcare fails, our workforce cannot work and our economy fails. I also want to reiterate the fact that in our last board meeting on April 8th, the board supported a proclamation recognizing the wake of the young child and acknowledged, quote, "that high-quality early learning and childcare up to age H is of public good and should be supported as such." So given this, I am very grateful for the word, for this consideration and I hope that you support and approve this additional amount for Le Petit. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lubinski. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Board of Supervisors and members of the audience. My name is Brené Royal and I'm a vineyard manager and wine brand owner here in Napa and my son has been attending Le Petit Elephant for about a year and a half now. I'll cut straight to the point. Le Petit Elephant is the reason I'm able to continue working in my profession, which often requires unorthodox hours out in the vineyards. My son's father, who works as a chef, faces the same challenge with long unpredictable hours. Without access to quality childcare, neither of us would be able to show up to fully work in our community and to continue contributing to it. Prior to attending Le Petit Elephant, from about eight weeks old until my son was eight months old, I was bringing him out into the vineyards with me because I had no other option. And as you can imagine, having a baby or even now a two-year-old out in the vineyard is not only unsustainable, but it's incredibly unsafe. Affordable, reliable childcare is not just a personal need, it's an essential infrastructure for Napa's workforce. Our wine and hospitality industries depend on working parents and those parents depend on providers like Petit Elephant, like Le Petit Elephant, excuse me. The county and the city of Napa need to be doing everything possible to support these small, family-run childcare businesses, the ones who are doing the hard work of caring for our children so that we can show up and power this local economy. When providers are supported, they can keep tuition costs manageable for families like mine. I'm personally launching a scholarship program through my wine brand to help attract the next generation of agriculture leaders in Napa. But as I think about where those young professionals will be in five or even 10 years, I have to ask, will Napa still be a place where they can build a life, raise children and grow their careers? Ms. Millie and the incredible team at Le Petit Elephant go above and beyond to keep costs low and offer financial aid to families in need, something that is increasingly rare and deeply necessary in this economy. This is not commercial childcare. This is a small family business rooted in our community, making it possible for working parents to stay here and thrive. So I ask of you, not just as a parent, but as someone committed to the future of this valley, please invest in Millie and Le Petit Elephant to help keep Napa what it is. Support the providers who care for our children so that we, the parents, the farmers, the chefs and the hospitality workers can continue to care for Napa. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Royal. Anyone else in the room or on the phones? Good morning, Ms. Radigan.
Good morning, Chair Cottrell, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Molly Radigan, Deputy City Manager, City of Napa. We provided our public comment via letter yesterday, but just wanted to reiterate a couple of points. First, we very much so commend the county for their work on childcare and supporting childcare in the Napa County community. However, we do remain concerned about the challenging precedent that would be set by waiving the fees and requirements for one project when there are many other equally valuable or important community-serving projects which have paid or will pay similar fees in the future. I have not had a chance to talk to Millie this morning, but my planning manager did reach out yesterday to offer to set up a meeting and we are willing to have a meeting to discuss how we can defer or enter into a payment plan so that we don't hold up the building permit issuance, which I understand is coming up rather quickly, while some of the grants and loans do come in. So happy to have that conversation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Radigan, and great to get that update, too. Good morning, Ms. Pentacci.
Hello, good morning. Good morning, members of the, oh, I'm sorry, the Board of Supervisors. Good morning. My name is Millie Pentacci. I am the director and founder of Le Petit Elephant Nursery and Preschool. Please call it LPE, it's fine. I would like to thank everybody for the consideration today for an increased forgivable loan in the amount of $150,000. As you all know, this SEQA abuse lawsuit kind of tripped us up to a point where we could no longer follow the plan that had been laid out. Had it not been for this lawsuit brought against me and the city of Napa, we would already have opened our doors. We'd already be in operation. I wouldn't be asking anybody for anything. We had a solid business plan and a plan with the SBA. I do want to, I did read the public comment letter provided by the city of Napa and I did hear from the project manager. The points that I want to make today are that, one, there was a grant that was being given out by the city of Napa for ARPA funds. I did not qualify for that grant because I employed more than 10 employees at that time. In fact, I had over 35 teachers in my employ when we had to close for COVID. And the ARPA grant from the city of Napa stipulated it was five to 10 employees at the most. So I did not qualify, therefore I was not able to apply for that grant. Also, we, at this time, are in such a financial situation that we will not be able to repay any, you know, any loans that we take out. We're not able to make more money to then pay back in a payment plan. So we are truly looking for the community, for the county and the city of Napa, to help bolster childcare by clearing the path for us. Without, without the path cleared, we are at a place where we will have to take out more loans and those loans will raise our rates and those rates will make it that I cannot give scholarships to low-income families and families in need. I will not be able to pay my teachers an affordable living wage so they can afford to live in Napa where the costs are rising every week. And I won't be able to make this as phenomenal of a project for the families and children of Napa as I could if we have just some more support. I do want to say that this is an unprecedented situation. We were sued, we were pushed back very far, about a year out, and over half a million dollars of unexpected costs. So I do want to say, as unprecedented as this was, I think this is an opportunity to set a precedent mindfully for all parties involved, to make the choice to support childcare, to make the choice to set a precedent that Napa does support childcare providers so we can keep going. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Pentacci. Is there any other comment in the room or on the phone? Then I will go ahead and bring it back to the board for further discussion. Supervisor Alessio, you've mentioned that you had a comment, and Supervisor Gallagher after that.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your comments and thank you, county CEO, for your continued leadership in this area that we know is in, it's been an ongoing need and it's really just, has not gotten better. And I want to thank Molly Radigan from the city of Napa for being here. It's great to see you here, Molly. Thank you. And for everybody who spoke today on this issue. I kind of wrote this, I'm going to read what I wrote here and please be patient with me. Working families in Napa are facing an unprecedented crisis, which won't be solved without bold leadership. Rising costs of infant care and childcare, in addition to high costs, housing costs, are forcing parents to make impossible choices. Either move out of Napa or forego safe, quality infant and childcare for the babies and children from ages zero to five. We know that early learning and safe thriving environments has lifelong impacts on ages zero to five. These critical years set the stage for successful education, opportunity for higher education and breaking the poverty gap. This just, this isn't just a family issue, it's a community preservation and economic issue. In the last five years, more than 5,500 residents have moved from Napa, with another 5,400 expected to move in the next five years. This correlates with the sharp drop of children enrolled in our school districts. Housing and infant care, childcare costs are a mathematical impossibility for many of our working families that include our first responders, educators, health providers, farmers, those in the wine production, hospitality, tourism and so on, all of which feed into our tourism, our hotel tax and our sales tax revenues that supports local jurisdictions. And those who want to be, and those who want to open an infant and childcare center are facing steep financial obstacles from the cost of finding a space to starting a small business. This is not a get-rich-quick business, a get-rich-quick business or get-rich-at-all business, but it's one that holds the fabric of our community together. This issue is urgent and requires the county, city and community-based organizations to work together to support our working families. As I've stated before, but I'm going to state it again, for every nine babies born in Napa County, there is one licensed space for an infant. For every four children under the age of five, there is one licensed space for early learning or, and childcare. Working families in Napa County spend near 20% of their monthly income in infant and childcare, which is the most expensive childcare in the US, according to Workforce Alliance's North Bay Labor Market Analysis Report of 2023. As noted, the county, the county's request of the city is not arbitrary. And I say that because that word was used in a letter to the county. As you know, I came from the city council, born and raised in the city. I was with the city council for six years. I have great friends and respect for the city of Napa, for the staff, for the leadership and for council. I also was part of the general plan and worked hard to make sure that public health and equity was part of the general plan and was an element in the general plan. So in the vision of the Napa County, in the, in the city general plan, it says the city needs to make concerted efforts to balance the needs of local residences and businesses, maintain and enhance the city's defining characteristic and quality of life, and ensure that community remains attainable and inclusive, family-friendly and appealing to an increasingly diverse population of residents, workers and visitors. Additionally, in the vision, it says the city that meets the needs of residents first, while developing and maintaining a vibrant and thriving economy. Napa will be a city that is inclusive, family-friendly, balanced, sustainable and flexible to adapt, adapt to changing future circumstances. The guiding principles of the general plan, as I mentioned, has a public element, a public health and equity element. And item number seven, it says the general plan seeks to address both the social and physical determinants of health and safety. Infant and childcare, access to infant childcare is critical to that. That's my, those are my words. Back to the plan. The plan promotes public health throughout furthering access to housing, shelter, education, including early education for our little ones, and jobs. And number 10 of this, of the general plan, of the element, and to achieve an economically diverse and resilient community, it says the general plan encourages partnerships with local education institutions and businesses and promotes daycare and preschool to grow and facilitate workforce participation, which we heard today from a public speaker. I support the CEO and I, and I again thank the CEO for his leadership, for not only being with this childcare provider of LPE during a very long day of mediation, just to be there to support her in this process of 12 hours. But in this request, it wasn't easy for the county to come together and find this $150,000 that's going to be coming out of our general fund. It took staff time, it took staff initiative to do this. And I support us moving forward to, so if LPE can start the remodel of the interior of this, as mentioned, near 20,000 square foot cinder block building that was built in the 1950s and needs a little updating. By the way, she's not expanding on the footprint anywhere on this property. But she does have to update it and she has to include fire sprinklers, which is going to be very, very expensive and that does take a lengthy, unlengthy time. I don't recall that LPE mentioning that her lease is going to end in December and she needs this new location, otherwise the current families of 120 families will be displaced, not to mention the addition families that are seeking infant and childcare. And again, we've invested so she can expand to 100 spaces that we know we desperately need in this community. I also support the CEO in asking the city of Napa staff and city council to review all estimated fees, engineering, fire, fire, I'm sure they can't do anything about building and planning fees, I know these are standard, but there might be some opportunities, maybe the art fee, maybe something in terms of the other areas, maybe it's the roundabout fee. Since Measure U and Measure G passed, we have some funds from other areas that we can jointly subsidize versus put this on the backs of this childcare provider and the families that she's trying to serve and subsidize who are low-income. This is clearly a barrier and the fees, as I have them estimated, nearly reached $500,000 just for the city. That does not include Napa sanitation and all the other fees that go with this. I also support the county to find opportunities to incentivize new and infant childcare centers in the unincorporated area of Napa County. I've asked the city to do the same, but I won't ask anybody to do something that we're not willing to do ourselves. So I appreciate the CEO as putting this in his, in his request and I ask the city to join us in this effort. I want you to know what I'm asking is not a first or outside of the city's authority. Many cities and counties have already addressed this community issue or doing so currently. They have passed measures, changed policies and made this an issue a priority because what is a community without children? And I thank the city of Napa city manager and mayor for coining that phrase and I think that's very, very true. What's a community without children? Let's not find out. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Alessio. Supervisor Gallagher.
Thank you, and I wanted to thank our CEO for bringing this before us. I do support the additional support in the way of a forgivable loan and I want to thank Ryan for all of the work and many hours he has put into this, into both professionally and personally, you know, supporting and being there with Millie during a really stressful time during the lawsuit. So thank you, Ryan, for, for being there and for putting in that extra effort. And I want to thank the city for their partnership and for continuing to explore ways to support LPE and childcare businesses in general. I think they need to determine how best that they can do this, given their own policies and processes. So I'd also like to encourage all jurisdictions to work together to look at how we can provide streamlining to childcare businesses, both in the unincorporated and incorporated areas. And I'm going to, I'm going to call out Peter Rumble from the Napa County Farm Bureau, who has done some great work over in Sonoma County and knows a lot about childcare by right in, in, I think Santa Rosa it is, he has, has some great ideas and I think we can learn from other, other counties and other cities what we might be able to do here. And we do have some people like Peter who have been involved in those, in that work that we can tap and learn from. And I just want to also thank Millie very much for her, her commitment and her fortitude because this has been a long road and I know it's been really, really difficult, but thank you for your commitment to the kids of, of Napa County. but thank you for your commitment to the kids of Napa County. And we really appreciate that you have stuck it out and you remain committed to, to the community. So thank you, Millie.
Thank you Supervisor Gallagher. Supervisor Ramos.
Thank you so much. I wanted to turn over and ask just a little bit more clarification in terms of the requested action. On number one, I'm absolutely supportive of the $150,000 increase. I must say, I'm seeing this a little differently. I see this $150,000 as a very small amount to secure our previous $1.35 million investment. So I'm not seeing it as, you know, from, from the get-go. I don't think I would have gotten to 1.5, you know, to, to this $1.35 million. But I think by including this, it helps us secure the investment that we've already made. I have a technical question for staff, and that is, we do have other ARPA dollars that are still flowing, and we are on our final, final year of true-up. Is that, is that correct? I'm gonna say probably, Ms. Craig, I'm gonna ask you some questions that are probably, I should have asked you to come up. In terms of ARPA, we're at our final, at our final allocations of the three-year programs?
All monies were obligated before last December 2024, and we have until December of 2026 to expend the final dollars. However, we are within the last half million, and we expect those to be spent either this quarter or next quarter, and definitely before the end of this calendar year.
Excellent. So my only consideration here, I understand MSA being general fund, there's sufficient corpus. My only additional ask here for consideration of my colleagues would be that if, in fact, any dollars that have been obligated under ARPA are not spent, that we turn first to ARPA to pay back the MSA corpus, because those would fall within the specifications that we already outlined. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, we understand that we would reclassify those expenditures to recognize this additional loan if, for any reason, other funds are not spent.
Thank you. ARPA dollars first. I understand everything's committed, but if something gets freed up, ARPA dollars first and then to MSA. So I would ask for my colleagues for, for that consideration. And then just a few comments on, on three and four. You know, I, I want to be, I'm gonna start with, with number four in terms of our opportunities to incentivize. I think it's important that, that we distinguish this moment as a moment to pivot and how we can have policies that are supportive of incentivizing. But just to be clear, we had, when, when we made this allocation of ARPA dollars that year, COVID happened, and we had $90 million of unbudgeted revenue. That was a tremendous windfall to this county, and we made a choice to make transformative investments that brought us to this point that we could identify childcare as a tremendous need. We had, we commissioned a childcare report that told us what we needed to do so that we could do this in a mindful way. I want to be very cautious and, and say, I don't want to turn to having general fund dollars be on the hook going forward. I think that for me, incentivizing opportunities in number four really is policies and land use practices as opposed to general fund obligations. I, I am proceeding very cautiously into the future, given the economic outlook, what is happening in the bond markets, and how it's affecting municipal budgets all around us and the shortfalls. Santa Rosa, I think, is discussing a $20 million shortfall today, the city of Santa Rosa. So I want to be very clear. For me, number four does not include money at the table. Next, to, I appreciate the city of Napa. The mayor reached out to me yesterday, and I appreciate the city of Napa being here. And I, I think that, you know, there's, while I understand in having sat in a city seat, having sat in this seat and had, had to make these decisions, I think that there is an, an opportunity to make joint investments that could be a windfall for everybody, the city of Napa and the county included. And when it comes to establishing precedent, I think this is where words matter. And what we have said time and time again at this county is that this program is not, in fact, setting precedent. This is one-time transformational investments. And I think the city has an opportunity here to also look at one-time transformational investments so that we can go ahead and lighten the load for our families. I've, I've said this before. I couldn't find childcare. When I, I heard your story of going to the vineyard, I, I couldn't find childcare. My kids would sometimes go to the vineyard with my dad in a car seat, and it turned out that my mom needed to retire in order for me to be able to return to work fully. That is not a choice that families have. And when you look at the, the wide range of wages, especially for our agricultural and hospitality industries, we need more affordable options. And I can't imagine a better use of collaboration between the city and the county than to ask the city to, to join us in the effort. We're already 1.35 million in. We've done this before. The city has, has come to us on, I don't have enough fingers to count on the number of times the city's come to us for investments in housing. And this is no different. This is also a safety net. Just as important as housing is how we care for our children. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Ramos. Supervisor Manfree.
Thank you. Thank you to all my colleagues for your very thoughtful comments. There's hardly anything left to say. But I, I just want to make my own views clear, which is that we have a community where it, it is very difficult to be a working family and get along. And for anyone who's ever been in that situation, it's an acute and grinding kind of reality. It's also a mental health issue. And so this project addresses multiple needs in the community in multiple ways, even though it's focused on a particular group of people with a particular group of needs, right? But that has positive benefits that kind of permeates through multiple levels of need, which I think is great. And it's, it's an area with an uncommon level of need. And this is a project with an uncommon ability, excuse me, to substantially improve childcare accessibility in the community. So yeah, I, I would just echo Supervisor Ramos's comments that a one-time transformational investment could make a huge difference here.
Thank you Supervisor Manfree. So I'm going through the requested actions, and I just want to reflect back a little bit of what we heard. First of all, I'm fine with the amendment as proposed by Supervisor Ramos, that ARPA dollars first. So, but I also want to thank Ms. Pentacci for being here and just acknowledge the, the journey that you've been through on this. And, and to have a parent be able to come speak about the importance is, is wonderful. And then I want to thank the city of Napa for its letter and Ms. Radigan for being here today, because we really do, I think you can hear from everyone on the board, want to be in partnership and collaboration on this very important topic. And I know the city understands that as well. So I appreciate Supervisor Gallagher, your point that you understand that the city also sees this as a priority and, and that it's less important to dictate exactly how, and that that's something that they are, their own jurisdiction, and they have to make decisions based on their financial situation and how they want to operate going forward. So I'm less interested in, and I think we don't want to overstep our role in specifying a particular path forward. So, but it was great to hear Ms. Radigan that there'll be a planning meeting coming up. So with that, I think hearing from everyone that the letter that we send, that's going to go out under my signature. So I want to be able to incorporate all those comments going forward. So with that, I will ask for a motion on this item.
I'll make that motion and include Supervisor Ramos's amendment that ARPA funds unpaid or expended ARPA funds will next go to MSA. And outside of that, everything else, I think, is, is okay to approve. Is that correct Supervisor Ramos?
Second, yeah. ARPA, the MSA to be repaid if ARPA funds are available.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by Supervisor Alessio with the amendment proposed and seconded by Supervisor Ramos. I do just want to take one more moment and say, you know, the mayor of Napa reached out to me too. And I appreciate that our jurisdictions are in close enough working relationship that we can check in and say, hey, this is where I am, and, and to hear from him, hey, we're working on this, let us do our process. I appreciate that too. So with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstained? Motion carries unanimously.
Chair, I will, I want to say too, on that note, that I also spoke with the mayor. I've been in touch, and I've been speaking with all the council members individually. So this has not been a surprise. We've been talking about infant and childcare and access and this issue for a while now. So the communication on my part with each individual has been ongoing, including yesterday. Thank you.
That's terrific. Thank you. All right, with that, we're going to take a five-minute break and come back at 10:24. Item 11, 10A, we're back to 10A. Thanks. All right, Ms. Hoskins informs me we are on the air, so we are going to get started again. And now we will move to item 10A to receive a presentation on a potential rate and fee structure, hear from staff, take public comment, and provide general direction. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Cottrell and members of the Board of the GSA. I'm Jamison Crosby, Natural Resources Conservation Manager, and I'm here with Ryan Aston of SEI to present the next steps in the process toward establishment of a rate and fee structure to fund the implementation of the Groundwater Sustainability Plan. As some of you may recall, we started this process in 2023. We presented several options to the GSA at that time for the establishment of either a fee, a special tax, or a benefit assessment. Direction was given by the GSA at that time to pursue the fee option, and we developed a detailed tactical memorandum that we presented to the GSA with our findings. And then in September of last year, 2024, we, the GSA also gave us direction to pursue a Water Code 10730 fee. We're here today to report on that and the steps we've taken in between. We have a lot to cover this morning, so I'm going to yield the floor to Mr. Aston. He'll explain what's happening and the presentation, and then, of course, as the chair said, would be happy to take questions and comments afterward.
Thank you, Jamison. Good morning, members of the Board. Glad to be with you today. A lot has happened since I was last here in September, so excited to provide an update on the development of a fee study in the Napa Valley sub-basin. As far as what I intend to cover today, I will briefly provide a little bit of background on sort of what led us to where we are this morning. And then I have to illustrate for you a revised approach to fee development. And within that, I'll be talking a bit about cost apportionment, a bit about outreach, and then I'll be showing some preliminary rate scenarios that hopefully can sort of illustrate what a revised fee structure might look like. Lastly, we'll talk about tentative next steps as well, pending board direction. So a little bit of background, as Jamison noted, in September, we came before you and recommended and received direction to pursue a Water Code Section 10730 fee based on estimated extraction. We then spent several months, Larry Walker Associates, or LWA, is our subcontractor on this project, and they spent several months developing applied water estimates for the Napa Valley sub-basin. In February 2025, we were meeting with staff and technical consultants, and upon review of those applied water estimates, staff expressed certain concerns about the methodology there. And I'm going to dig into a little more detail on what those concerns exactly were. Also wanted to note that in March last month, we did meet with agricultural stakeholders as well to discuss sort of what led us to this revised approach and some of the elements that go into that also. So in terms of that staff and technical consultant review of the applied water estimates, there were namely two types of concerns related to those estimates. The first related to consistency, and this really stems from the fact that using two different water use estimation methodologies for various purposes, meaning like for the model and for the fee study, I think holds implications related to policy, outreach, and data availability and consistency. This in part stems from the fact that the model is really intended to look at the sub-basin as a whole, whereas for something like a fee program, you really have to have a parcel scale analysis because you have to apportion a certain amount of charge at the parcel scale. So there naturally, there is sort of a bit of, a bit of a difference in the goals and the perspective of those two approaches. But there were, there were concerns expressed regarding consistency between those two methodologies. The second type of concern related to variability of water use. So when these estimates were completed, we sat down with staff and technical consultants, and the prevailing feeling was that the hydrogeologic setting of this sub-basin presents a higher degree of uncertainty related to groundwater extraction volume compared to other sub-basins or other basins. And this relates in part to the various factors, parcel by parcel, where there's just different opportunity on a parcel scale for vines to benefit from direct uptake and soil moisture. Typically, when you have applied water estimates for, you know, for use in a fee program, you have some sort of baseline assumptions, and I think it became clear, speaking with staff and technical consultants, that those baseline assumptions may not be accurately applied in this sub-basin across all agricultural parcels. So that was a big part of the concern as well. Generally, the feeling was that more data may be needed in order to develop an accurate applied water estimation for use in a fee program in this sub-basin. So based on those concerns, we worked with staff to develop a revised approach to fee development. We had, we had some thoughts based on when we were originally kind of analyzing these different options, and so we sort of went back to the drawing board and started to incorporate some of the ideas that we had discussed previously. And what we have come up with, what we've identified as a potentially optimal path, is a hybrid methodology that charges different user classes differently. And so what we're looking at is the potential to charge domestic and commercial users on a parcel basis with potential consideration of parcel size as a means to gauge potential increased water use on, say, a larger parcel with a large amount of turf areas, things of that nature. Municipal and small public water system users would be charged based on their reported extraction. These are the only user classes for which we generally have solid data in terms of knowing how much is being extracted. And then agricultural irrigators would be charged according to either their planted acreage or their irrigated acreage, and there's some nuance there that I'm going to get into in more detail in just a moment. From the onset, we realized that two elements of this revised approach required further consideration. One is that agency costs would need to be apportioned appropriately across these different user classes. So that gets a little complicated when you have different types of charges, but we do think we have a pretty good solution to that that I'll share in a moment. The other, the other thing that requires further consideration relates to agricultural users, specifically that agricultural water use needs to be looked at in terms of alternative water sources like surface water and recycled water, and the occurrence of dry farming as well, that in some cases, reduced, reduced rates or removal of charges may be appropriate. So those are two things that we, that we have focused on since identifying this potential new path, and we do have some further thoughts on those as well. I did want to touch on the agricultural approach in a little more detail. Wanted to share some sort of benefits and challenges of an irrigated acreage approach. Some of the benefits are increased predictability and consistency across the sub-basin, again, related to those concerns that we identified for the extraction approach. I think on the other side of that, there is more predictability in terms of revenue generation and in terms of the costs incurred. It's a little more straightforward than an extraction-based approach. So to that point, annual changes, I think, are easier and less expensive to track and update, so there's potentially less cost to the GSA for the annual administration of an irrigated acreage charge as opposed to an extraction charge. And I think to some degree, annual changes will be maybe more clearly understood. It's a little simpler that, you know, changes in irrigated acreage produce similar changes in charges. Some of the challenges here, I think the primary challenge is that with less granularity, charges will not reflect parcel-specific characteristics such as irrigation efficiency. And this is where you lose some of that built-in proportionality of an extraction fee, some of that granularity that could be used potentially to incentivize conservation. So that is something you lose a little bit here, and that's one of the reasons that we initially pursued an extraction approach. Again, given some of those concerns, I think that while it is not optimal to lose some of that granularity, I think at this point, we realize that we don't necessarily have the data to support that degree of granularity. And then, of course, another challenge of this approach is properly incorporating dry farming and use of alternative water sources, so that's another thing that we're considering as well. I wanted to turn back to that first issue that I mentioned, which is how would you apportion costs appropriately across different user classes when you have different types of charges? Obviously, if you just have a charge per acre foot, this isn't an issue. You just apportion the charges across, you know, across all user classes in an acre-foot fashion. But when we have these different types of charges, you want to make sure that you have the appropriate cost burden placed on each of these user classes. And so the tentative approach we've developed to do that is by looking at percentage of pumping by each user class. So what you see on the screen there in front of you are these different user classes, and then the 2024 pumping undertaken by each class, and then the percentage of that pumping out of the total pumping from the 2024 annual report. You see a budget number as well there of about $2.9 million, and then the budget allocation to each user class is simply that budget multiplied by the appropriate percentage for each user class. So this is, I think, one way that we can achieve a proportional cost burden across these classes, even though we're proposing different types of charges, a charge per irrigated acre, a charge per acre foot, and potentially a charge per parcel as well. I wanted to touch base as well on our continued outreach efforts. We did, from 2023 to 2024, have various meetings with agricultural stakeholders, water system, groundwater users, and commercial users as well. I mentioned a moment ago that once we developed this revised approach, we did meet again with stakeholders from the Napa Valley agricultural industry. We presented sort of the general framework for this revised approach. The version I'm presenting to you today has been updated a bit, but we did kind of present the general framework for what we were looking at. I think generally that those stakeholders understood the challenges that we were describing in that extraction approach, and I think they were seemingly open to a revised approach. I do want to note that the preliminary rates that we showed them in that meeting are lower than those that I'll be presenting today, so I think that's worth noting. This is a result of an increase in the projected budgets, and then we have some sort of alternative scenarios that shift things around a bit, and you'll see that in just a moment. A couple themes, there were concerns expressed over costs from this group. That includes overall budget amounts and the effect a fee would have on the industry, particularly during, you know, a challenging time for the wine industry. There were concerns over a lack of incentive for conservation, something I touched on a moment ago. As we get away from that granularity, we lose some of that incentivization for conserving water. And then a suggestion, a suggestion was also shared that some form of continued county contribution to the budget could lower the revenue need and potentially lower the rates. And I actually do have a rate scenario that I'm going to show you a little later that illustrates what a potential continued contribution might do in terms of how much it could, could lower the rates. So I have three rate scenarios to share with you today. I want to note that these are all based on a budget of approximately $3 million, and they represent potential maximum rates that a fee study would justify. I touched on this back in September, but I do want to reiterate that the purpose of the fee study is to justify the maximum budget and maximum rates, but the GSA, the Board, of course, can choose in any given year to reduce that budget and/or reduce those rates. So what we're looking at here is sort of potential ceiling to what, to what the rate structure could, could charge. And all scenarios that I'm about to show utilize 2024 pumping to apportion costs in the way I illustrated a few slides back with that table. They do have slightly different approaches to doing that, but they're all based on that same concept of using percentages of pumping as a means to apportion percentages of cost. A couple details about this first scenario. For agricultural users in scenario one, they're charged according to irrigated acreage. Costs are apportioned based on 2024 pumping percentages. In this scenario, no charge is assigned to planted acres that are either dry-farmed or irrigated with alternative water sources. Now, at this point, we are still working to refine our understanding of how much planted acreage is perhaps not irrigated with groundwater. So for this scenario, we made an assumption of 10%, 10% of planted acres not being irrigated with groundwater, either being dry-farmed or using alternative water sources. For domestic and commercial users, in this scenario, they would be charged on a parcel basis. For municipal and small public water system users, they would be charged according to extraction data on an acre-foot basis. So this next slide provides a table. Again, here you have the different user classes as you go down. There are 2024 pumping, 2024 pumping percentage, and then the rate denominator, which is different, of course, because we have different types of charges. That 18,230 irrigated acres, again, assumes 10% of the total planted acreage is either dry-farmed or irrigated without groundwater. And then on the far right side, you have potential rates for each of these. One thing I want to note, the municipal category includes only the city of St. Helena, and it recently came to our attention that the city's wells may be outside the basin boundary. We are working to identify whether that is an error in the map delineation or what can be done about that, but I did want to note that that was a recent issue that came to our attention. Go ahead and keep moving on for now. The second scenario apportions costs in the same manner as the first, but we've introduced another variability, a little more nuanced, to this structure. So what we've done is we've, we've analyzed costs and separated them into two buckets, what we're calling common costs and applied groundwater use costs. So the common costs include those related to the technical advisory group, administration, and approximately 40% of technical consultant costs. Applied groundwater use costs include management action costs and 60% of technical consultant costs. The reason that we have separated these into two buckets is because I'm going to show you in a moment a different rate table, and that's going to take into consideration whether a user class benefits from all of those costs or perhaps just the common costs and not the applied groundwater use costs. A little more detail here related to the specific user classes. For agricultural users, in this approach, they're charged according to groundwater irrigated and planted acreage. So I'll show you in a moment, we kind of have two different rates, sort of a baseline rate for all planted acreage, and then a higher rate for groundwater irrigated acreage. The way we're doing that is those common costs that I mentioned before are apportioned to all planted acres, including those that are dry-farmed or not irrigated with groundwater. And this would be based on the concept that all planted acreage receives some degree of benefit from GSP implementation. The applied groundwater use costs are then apportioned only to the groundwater irrigated acreage, which would be based on the concept that that acreage, the groundwater irrigated acreage, receives a higher degree of benefit from, from the full spectrum of costs. on the concept that they don't benefit from the full spectrum of costs, that they benefit only from those common costs. Lastly, municipal and small public water system users are apportioned both common costs and applied groundwater use costs. So this table is a little more nuanced, again, a little more complex. On the left side, it's pretty similar, but what we have is, next to that percentage of 2024 pumping, we have another column that's percentage of 2024 pumping excluding domestic and small commercial. And so what we're doing there is we're using those second percentage amounts to apportion the applied groundwater use costs. So this is the same kind of concept as that first scenario, but again, we're working with those two cost buckets. A couple things to point out: the domestic/commercial, you'll notice, has $0 of the applied groundwater use costs there. What that's achieving is a lower rate for those users. And really, again, that's based on the idea that these users do benefit from the common costs, but not necessarily from some of the higher costs, some of the applied groundwater use costs. If I could direct your attention back up to the top and on the right side there, I want to talk a bit about the agricultural user class in this scenario. So again, here, we've separated out non-groundwater irrigated acres and groundwater irrigated acres. And similar to scenario one, we've made an assumption that 10% of planted acres are not groundwater irrigated. That is something that we do intend to refine, but looking at some of the preliminary data, we felt that that was, you know, good enough for us to illustrate what this looks like here today. So what you'll note is that the common costs are applied to all planted acres, and that leaves a rate of $46 per planted acre. And then the applied groundwater use costs are apportioned to the groundwater irrigated acres, which produces a rate of $128 per groundwater irrigated acre. So that 128 is the 46 with an additional rate coming from those applied groundwater use costs. Going down towards the bottom, what you see is for municipal and small public water systems, a rate of $206 per acre foot. Again, these users under this scenario are apportioned both types of costs. Both cost buckets are applied there. So again, there's a lot more nuance with this table. These are all preliminary things, so interested if anybody has questions or feedback in this.
I have one question, and then I'll turn to my colleagues here. So what, how are you looking at parcels that have multiple uses? Like, someone has a home and a vineyard, someone has vineyards and a winery, you know? So can you walk us through those types of scenarios?
Absolutely, yes. So if you look at the parcel counts there under domestic/commercial, it's 2,541 total. Thankfully, the Napa County use codes are quite detailed, and so when there's a parcel that has a vineyard and a single-family home, the use codes tell us that. And so within that parcel count, we are counting those properties that are marked as having a vineyard and a home. So the idea under this scenario is that they would be charged for their irrigated acreage, and then they would be charged for the domestic residents as well.
So you're able to slice and dice a little bit and count both subsets that exist on a parcel?
Yes, I think so. And that we really rely on the use codes for that. But again, Napa County has a pretty detailed use code system, and so we're able to get a lot of that information that way.
Thank you, that's helpful.
I guess, in an overarching kind of way, I think it, to me, the goal here is to create a framework that makes it so that it's in everyone's best interest to participate in data sharing to reduce use over time. And I know we're not quite there right now, but I guess I just want to put that out there as the ultimate goal, because this really is a shared resource. It's a scarce resource. It's one we need to figure out a way to use less of, but still do the same kind of work. And I actually want to echo a comment from the Farm Bureau letter, which was that a rational and equitable solution would be best for the community. And this is something we're partnering with the ag community is key all the way through all the conversations, and I know that you're already doing that work, but just keep it up. And ultimately, I think the more that we can meter withdrawals from water systems, the better off this whole process will be. Because, you know, how would any of us feel if we just got charged what people expected that we used for electricity or phone service or anything else, really? Because that's kind of how we're having to start this, because we don't have enough data in the door yet. So I think the goal is to keep it rational and equitable by moving toward a situation where we can monitor as much as possible to make it truly fair. And I guess the other thing I just want to underscore is that we do have disadvantaged communities in our groundwater sub-basin, and I just emailed you while I was sitting here, because there is a tool that the Department of Water Resources prepared specifically for groundwater planning. You're nodding, so I'm guessing you found it. So that's probably a good first place to look, to make sure that we're considering users, particularly domestic users, who may not have the financial resources to add on an additional fee to, you know, to their budgets, because it really is that hard for some families. So I just want to make sure we're keeping that in the forefront of our minds as we're rolling out new fees as a governing structure.
All right, thank you. So I think you can keep marching through the slides for us.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Yeah, and I just have a few more here. So I do have a third scenario, excuse me. And this third scenario is identical to scenario two, but it introduces this concept of a continued county contribution. You can see on the top kind of bar there across, we have the budget, and then an assumed continued contribution of $800,000. We sort of, we went back and forth on what number to use there, but I felt this was a decent middle ground that kind of can really illustrate the effect that such a contribution would have on rates compared to that last table. You can see that the revenue need has been reduced to about $2.1 million, and we're still using that sort of cost analysis where you have the two buckets there of common and applied groundwater use costs. So you can see that the rates come down significantly here, from, I think, 45 and 128 on the acres down to 34 and 93, from about $84 to $62 per parcel, and from 206 to 150 per acre foot. So just wanting to illustrate that here, that some sort of continued county contribution could have a great effect on what these rates look like. A few more notes about that. I wanted to touch on the concept of disadvantaged communities. It is challenging within a fee program to address the ability to pay for disadvantaged communities. Under Prop. 26 and 218, there are stipulations that make it difficult to excuse or, you know, allow people to not pay fees. Typically, what that's looked at as is the other users subsidizing those people, and there has been case law surrounding that issue. But I want to note that I believe any contribution from the county, from the general fund, could potentially be used specifically for disadvantaged communities or things of that nature. I think that revenue does not have the same constraints around it the way that the fee program revenue does. So if that is something that the board wants to consider, I think that's an avenue worth exploring there. Other than that, you know, again, I want to illustrate that the fee study, if we do go through with that, will sort of justify the maximum rates. So if the fee study takes into consideration a county contribution, that effectively lowers the maximum rate you could charge. That may be optimal. The other avenue here is that you use something more similar to scenario two, and then in any given year, you can make a choice to go with something like scenario three. The fee study would justify that maximum rate, but again, you have the ability to make a contribution in any given year and lower those rates. So there's a bit of a process check there as far as what the preference of the board is, but I just want to illustrate sort of those two pathways there. Just wanted to touch base, I think, overall then. Wanted to note as well that we developed these scenarios to try to illustrate sort of this generally recommended approach, this hybrid approach, but many of these details can be tweaked and changed related to cost apportionments, how much, you know, how much we're digging in and having these two cost buckets, the different considerations that go into each of these user classes in those tables that I showed. These things are, of course, not set in stone, and so we're interested in any feedback related to the way we went about apportioning costs. There's, of course, the concept of the county contribution, and then also the concept of implementation year. So I do think there's maybe something of a question here on whether the fee program should be implemented in time for charges to be placed on 2025, 2026 tax bills. optionally, a fee study could still be adopted this year, and the fee program could be, you know, deferred to next year. So these are all, of course, considerations that are under your purview, just wanting to highlight them there. And I believe, oh, that's right, I'm sorry, I have one more slide. Next steps and sort of tentative schedule: we are looking to continue to refine our understanding of irrigated acreage and groundwater use data, trying to get a better grasp on dry farming and use of alternative water sources. We are looking to refine the budget a bit more as well, and then, per board feedback, develop a draft fee study and conduct additional community outreach as well. We do have a tentative schedule shown there at the bottom. I think that we can meet these deadlines if the board wishes. That includes a fee study being presented in about a month on May 20th. And then, per Water Code Section 10730, some of the procedural requirements here then include publishing notice of the proposed fee program on the GSA website and in a local paper that would maybe take place in late May. We could then come back and have a public meeting that's required by that Water Code section on July 28th for consideration of fee program adoption. The backstop here, if we do want to place charges on tax bills this coming fall, is the auditor's office deadline of August 8th. So that's when we would have to submit direct charges to the auditor's office in order for them to be placed on tax bills this fall. I believe that's all I have. Thank you for your time. Happy to answer any other questions.
Great. So at this point, what I will like to do is open it up for public comment. So if we have folks in the room or on the phone who'd like to speak to this, this would be a great time.
Chris Malin, Executive Director of the Institute for Conservation Advocacy Research and Education. We've been involved with SIGMA, pre-SIGMA, through SIGMA, through the County Alternative, and all the way up to the County Groundwater Sustainability Plan. And I know that SIGMA provides, makes comments and statements about de minimis use, and I see that your chart lumps domestic with commercial. I'm assuming domestic is residential. Hate to make that assumption, but... And residential is de minimis and is not subject to SEQA. So hopefully, that will get clarified. I think that the ag industry has done great harm to the groundwater, and so they have a lot, they do need fees, and they need regulation to bring groundwater back into sustainability. And it seems to me that small farmers that are growing food that can barely make it, they barely have enough to survive their business on, and this could really hurt them. So I think there needs to be an exemption for people who grow food, and because that's for the health of the community, and these people struggle to survive in this, in a farming industry in Napa County. So I'd like to see a break for them. Also, the people, there were 390 parcels greater than one acre. So how many of those are residential? And I would hate to see people have to pay, you know, residential folks within the sub-basin have to pay a fee when they're struggling as it is with insurance and taxes, and then now they have to pay to help recover the aquifer that the wine industry destroyed or is destroying and trying to recoup and make better. I do recognize that, but I don't think we should punish people along the way who were not part of causing the problem. So, and again, these people who live on the valley floor in these parcels more than one acre, paying an additional amount on top of the fee, it just seems like it is too much. It's too much to bear. So I think the fee schedules here need to take into consideration de minimis use according to SIGMA, take into consideration the small farmer and residents who are struggling. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malin. Good morning, Mr. Rumble.
Good morning. Peter Rumble from the Napa County Farm Bureau. I apologize that our letter came in pretty late yesterday, so I'm not expecting everybody to have a chance to read it. And a number of the points that were made in the letter were actually addressed in today's presentation. So I'd really like to start just by saying, recognizing how difficult and complex of a topic this is, and express a deep appreciation and gratitude to county staff for reaching out, asking questions, checking ideas, and taking that back and incorporating it into what is presented, and definitely look forward to that continued collaboration going forward. There's a few things that I just wanted to highlight that were covered in the letter and addressed to some degree in the presentation, and that's this idea of every individual, every resident, every business truly does benefit from sustainable, well-managed groundwater supply, right? And so in that notion, a common charge, I think, makes a lot of sense. And in that notion as well, some kind of additional contribution from outside of that basin makes a lot of sense as well, right? Every visitor, every resident benefits from groundwater. Not necessarily suggesting that come directly out of the general fund, but some kind of contribution to lower the overall rate, I think, is that is assessed on members of the basin is really well thought out. Noted that there are a number of assumptions that could use refinement. We agree, they could use some refinement. And also want to say, we are working really hard to figure out a way that we can collect, aggregate, provide the county with actual data, right? So we don't have to rely on assumptions. So that's an effort that we want to undertake and contribute as an active partner in this We did note, or the presentation did note, that there would be consideration for dry farming and non-irrigated acres. It's a little unclear, and I suspect that we'll work that out over time, how that process could work, right? We do want to incentivize our agricultural users to use less water where appropriate. And so should somebody make that transition to dry farming, should somebody rip out their vineyard, as is happening now, how is that taken into consideration, that process? I know that is on the minds of staff. That's not a criticism, that's just something that we want to highlight. And I appreciate you calling out, we want a rational and equitable approach to this, particularly when there are other users who have options that agriculture does not have for other water sources. And should they be charged a lower rate for using that groundwater, we find that to be a bit inequitable. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rumble. Good morning, Ms. Benvenuto.
Good morning, Michelle Benvenuto, Wangars of Napa County. So most of our concerns were also identified in the Napa County Farm Bureau letter, and we agree with those, so I won't repeat it, except for, we do need to find ways to incentivize conservation and innovation, and a flat fee doesn't really do that. We are an ag community. We have made a policy decision that groundwater be utilized by ag resources. We should be appreciative that we grow a crop that is one of the most water-efficient crops that you could grow. Given these random concerns, we want to know what the process is to adjust or appeal the rate. Also, the fees are based on the projected budget, but I didn't see how that project budget was determined, if that project budget includes any grants, and if so or if not, how would that rate be adjusted depending on what that amount is. We also do encourage the county to provide a contribution, because this is a really difficult time for the industry. We appreciate the discussion on disadvantaged communities and wonder if there is a way for a farmer to apply for fee mitigation based on financial need. Finally, the schedule to add the fees to the fall tax rule seems pretty aggressive, and people haven't had time to prepare for that. And that's it, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benvenuto. Thank you, Ms. Benvenido. Okay. Oh, and here we have Ms. Novy. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Board. Thank you so much for the opportunity to comment on this item today. Michelle Novy with the Napa Valley Vintners. First, I just want to echo Mr. Rumble's comments around thanking the county for all of the work that's gone into this. Specifically, Ms. Crosby and the team of consultants have done an exceptional job, I think, in terms of their thoroughness and their outreach to the ag community. And so we're really grateful for that. And we look forward to continuing to collaborate because, as was noted earlier, there are further refinements that are needed. I think generally, while the NVV hasn't convened a group on this specific proposal as outlined because the PowerPoint wasn't available until just now, I think we're generally supportive of both the comments made by the Farm Bureau and Wine Growers. I did also have questions around the $3 million budget and how that was created, and then what the parameters are around that budget. So are there limits about how it can be expanded or decreased? Because I would be very concerned to see that those costs passed along to all of the community, but in particular ag, which is in a unique challenge right now in terms of all of the headwinds that it's facing. It was noted that this current structure doesn't necessarily recognize or incentivize conservation efforts. And so to the supervisor's comment about moving towards a framework that does support that, that actually is metering and you are paying for what you use, I think we're supportive of that as well. There was a question in the presentation around the implementation timeline, the tax bill implementation timeline. I think our recommendation there would be for '26, '27. And then lastly, I just, I don't normally comment on what other public speakers share, but I was very disappointed by the comments made by the first speaker, which I think were really unsupported in the record of how the ag community has been a steward of the land and a steward of our groundwater basin. That stewardship is reflected in the data. And so I would encourage the board to keep that in mind and just the public at large. It's really easy to, when you have an industry that is kind of the big industry in town, to paint us as the big bad wolf, but we are very far from that, quite the opposite. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Novy. Anyone else in the room who would like to speak? Perfect timing, Mr. Nissen.
Thank you, Chairman Cottrell. Peter Nissen, Calistoga. I am a owner of a property that has a domestic well, but I also use it for irrigation. I'm concerned about the costs of the program. From my calculations before, the budget was bumped. It was about $2.5 million. Of that, 80% of it was consultants. I hope as we move forward, consultants are needed less and we can use monies more within staff as they become more proficient in administering Sigma issues and regulations that the state has set. So I'm very concerned about the costs, not to mention the different fees that were originally proposed, $154 per acre for domestic and industrial, whereas agricultural users, $90 an acre. I would prefer that it all be used in the same sort of category of fees being either per acre or per acre foot. So I'm hoping that we come to a situation where it's a nice, flowable situation as we move forward into Sigma and we have our five-year look back and we have a situation that we, as a county, can afford to do it and make it not as onerous as it might be with the fees that are being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nissen. Other comments from the room or on the phone this morning? Okay. Great. Then I will bring it back to the board for feedback. And again, just to make sure that we understand our goal here, it's to give direction on this. We don't have a specific up or down vote we're taking, so the more individual comments I think that we all can offer, the better. Is that, I'm checking with staff that that's what they're looking for. Okay. Great. So with that, I will turn to Supervisor Gallagher.
Thank you. Thank you to the staff for the presentation and to the industry for their comments. So I think just to clarify, we're using $3 million right now as a way to kind of illustrate what the different scenarios are. So we have an approved $3 million and we will be looking at that as a part of our overall budget. So just, yeah, so we will have an opportunity, as will the public, to look at what's in that budget and the opportunity to move things around if we so choose or, you know. Okay. So just to clarify for everybody, that's not like a satin stone budget. I do definitely share the concern about incentivizing conservation. I think you, I think you've heard this many, many times now and you're looking for ways to figure out how to do that, how to figure out if, you know, if someone's dry farming, using recycled water, all of that. And maybe there is a way to reward people who start metering, you know, or incentivize metering because then we can actually get the real data and they will have an opportunity then to potentially lower their cost if they can prove that they're conserving and all of that. So there needs to be some kind of mechanism for, you know, lowering costs for people who really are conserving and doing different kinds of practices within their vineyard or their winery for efficiencies and whatnot. So I know that's really hard to get to, and I think I agree very much with Supervisor Manfree that the goal is to try to get to everyone measuring so that we can do something very accurate and fair. But since we're not there, it's like, okay, where can we start? And then what are the ways in which we can move forward so that we can collect real data that will help inform a most fair way of distributing the costs? I think I do like scenario three because, you know, there are always common costs that everyone shares, and I think spreading those common costs out makes sense to do that as much as possible. I do agree that, right, you know, this is coming kind of quickly and on the heels of so much that the industry is dealing with. So delaying the implementation to the 20, I don't know what we said, '27, '28 or '26, '27 makes much more sense. So I think that's going to be really important. And then I think after determining the actual budget, going back and looking at what makes sense for a county contribution, I am supportive of county contribution. You know, if it's, if it is indeed $3 million, then maybe $1 million, you know, I think a third is, it makes sense because we could take that and use that not only to offset costs for everyone, but we could take a portion of that to offset costs for disadvantaged communities, which is really, really important to do. So I think we have to kind of find a way. I know that, you know, that's really difficult and as staff was saying. But I think that, you know, since we could use our money to do that, we wouldn't be running into any legal concerns. And it does make sense to create equity in the, in this system, however we can do that. I think that's all that I had to say for now, and I'm interested to hear from my colleagues. But thank you so much for all your work.
All right. Supervisor Ramos and then Supervisor Manfree.
Thank you so much. I thank you to staff, and we've been at this for years, and I still can't help but be bitter that our alternative was not approved. But putting that aside, I think that we, that pushing off implementation of a fee structure to '26, '27 is the right move because it allows us to really figure out which model is the best. Second, I think that we need to look at this, the county contribution as stabilization to the fund as opposed to subsidizing the fund. And I say that in that, as we have variations in planted acres and irrigated acres, whether it's just from the erosion control plans underway or different decisions that have been made, those fluctuations are going to occur in the budget throughout the year. And so I'm, I am concerned that if we say, and again, just for discussion purposes, I'm using a $3 million price tag here, if we have a $3 million revenue assumptions and something like flux or something else were to come our way and we would have a large dip, we're going to have a, we're going to have a true-up problem there. And so I think when we look at the, I would, I would challenge staff to look at the county contribution in a portioned way of, if we were going to say a third, I would say half of that. So let's say, again, just for discussion purposes, if it were to be $1 million, $500,000 of it would in fact be to stabilize and contribute to the overall cost. But another 500 needs to be there for the fluctuation of unanticipated decreases in revenue, given just what happens in agriculture. So we need to not look at this as just a price, a price that's coming in from, a transfer coming in from the general fund necessarily. I think it needs to be used to stabilize the revenue source. We've done this in the past for staff, similar to the Parks and Open Space District, where we've thrown a floor of revenue basis. So we did this COVID time. We made sure that they didn't drop below a certain level. And so I challenge staff to look at how we can do that and to say essentially that the county will come in with its contribution to ensure that the budget will be at a minimum level and so have some variation in there. I think that the equitable way, as we have seen, is to certainly, pardon me, be able to look at the different types of uses. But I do think that the hybrid model, I think, needs some refinement. I do think there needs to be some contribution at the beginning. Jamison, you and I have talked, I'd like to see the county's contribution come down over time. This is a true cost of service that is going to happen, but I also understand that new, the new imposition of these fees is not something that was accounted for previously. So I think by pushing off to '26, '27 gives time, having a contribution, scaling back the county contribution, but ensuring that the county's participation is there to have a minimum threshold budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Ramos. Supervisor Manfree.
Thank you. I guess just following all of those helpful public comments and thinking about it a little bit more, I just want to point out that if we can get enough metering onboard, it creates opportunities for doing things like tiered fee structures, which really do incentivize conservation. That's probably a lot of years out right now, but it, you know, for people who are good actors, which I truly believe is most people in the basin, that's going to be something that's probably very appealing and would be really helpful to create a system of, you know, benefits and, what's the opposite of a benefit? A non-punitive, yeah, detriment to people who overuse. And it is true that there's a de minimis exception for domestic water use in Sigma, and it's two acre feet or less for domestic use only. And that's because of the health and safety needs for water. And so there is, I believe, and, you know, I leave it to council to check for, check on it completely, but I believe there is a possibility of creating an exception for the first two acre feet of use possibly. I actually think that's really a high number because a family of four in our contemporary water use reality typically uses less than an acre foot a year. So maybe that's something we can look at, we can see how flexible that is. But, but there, yeah, like there's a basic health and safety need for water in domestic situations. I agree that the delayed implementation is a good way to go, especially with everything that's going on right now in our world. And I also want to raise the point of following and idling and how those might be handled. And I think that's an opportunity for partnership with the agricultural community to help our planners understand how much water is needed under those scenarios and how things change. And then the other thing is that we're going to have a lot of parcels, probably hundreds of parcels, that have areas within their boundaries that are both inside the basin and outside the basin. And I believe this is a question for council of how to handle those because the basin boundary, to my knowledge, would be a jurisdictional boundary that has a legal element. And so, yeah, I'm just not, we need to look through that lens at what, how to charge fees for parcels that are both inside and outside, having given it a little more thought. So thanks for this really helpful discussion. And, yeah, I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Supervisor Manfree. Supervisor Alessio, and then I will have some comments too.
Thank you. And thank you for the work of staff. And I didn't know what's been going on for years, but I can, I can believe it. As they say, you know, timing is everything. And right now, the timing sucks. It's just painful to hear that we're talking about imposing fees on people, both in the industry and private users. I think '26 is going to be here in the blink of an eye, and I would actually, you know, push it out another year to '27, '28 if we have to do this. I'm especially not comfortable moving forward if we don't have strong data that supports the fee structure. And it's not clearly incentivizing excellent conservation, which we know a lot of people are doing. So, you know, I think there's, you've done a tremendous amount of work. I can't even imagine doing this work myself, so thank you. But it just, it clearly looks like we have a lot more work to do. And pushing it out, getting more data, making sure it's incentivized. Thank you for talking about the tiered possibility, the tiered option. I think that's, you know, looking at how the city of Napa, you know, has their fee structure, they have a tiered process. And the other thing is that the more people conserve, the less, which is what we need, the less revenue comes in. So it becomes a catch-22, and the more subsidy or potential we would need to contribute to stabilize this funding. It's a critical issue. I know we all sense that at a critical time where there really is, I mean, it's like the word of the year is uncertainty. And to add on top of that, I'm just not comfortable with right now. I'm glad, I'm thankful that we're not making a decision today. We're just kind of giving you feedback. I appreciate the public comment coming from, you know, the industry and, you know, and Chris Malin too. We need to, we all know that this is a very important issue to us. But moving forward in that ethical, you know, way is going to be, is going to be critical. So just continue the work. I'll continue to listen and learn and just appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Alessio. So just, I wanted to echo a lot of what's been said already. First, thank you to the industry groups, the Vintners, the Farm Bureau and the Wine Growers for the real constructive comments here today and the ongoing participation in this process because this, whatever scheme is ultimately adopted really needs to work for your membership and our grape-growing and winemaking community. And also, I've had the chance to talk with Garrett Buckland and Caleb Mosley at the Grape Growers, and I'm incorporating, you know, what I've heard from them in my comments here as well. So first of all, I think just an overarching thing, we want, whatever scheme we put into place, we need to make sure that it provides certainty to groundwater users so that, you know, if there is a fee established, that that isn't something that moves around a lot and that, as we've heard, really, we need to have transparency and certainty in what the budget looks like. So I think you've already heard that, the need to make budget details very clear once we have them. I know we need, we're not, we kind of have a whole I know we need, we're not, we kind of have a holding place for that right now. And I think when we have a, a budget established, committing to and not to exceed year over year. And also perhaps we have some kind of GSP budget policy document that talks about what are the things we want to have in there. I appreciate Mr. Nissen's point about, we don't want to see that chock full of consultants. So being able to have some clarity there. You mentioned the concept that in any given year, the county could decide to increase its participation, which would therefore lower rates. I would rather see the county commit to support in a multi-year period to Supervisor Ramos's point of, you know, if it's for the first two years at X and then it scales back. But I think rather than, than bring it to the board every year for some decision, I think that actually just injects more uncertainty. So I'd, I'd recommend another path there. I think the idea definitely of deferring to 26, 27 makes sense. I hear Supervisor Alessio's point. I think I'd like to hear from you all about what that would mean because we know, when we're talking about this too, let's remember that the county is now paying 2.5 million this year. We will be paying probably 3 million next year. So that is a significant drain on our general fund too. And again, I think industry, hearing from the comments today, understands that this is something that is an ongoing expense and we have willing participants. It's just, we need to really get this right and not rush it out the door. And so again, deferring it and being supportive of continuing county contribution, at least for the next two or three years, and then having a plan again, because that builds uncertainty. And then I think the other thing that, you know, talking with Garrett and Caleb, one of the points they made, and I think Supervisor Manfree, you made this point, that the, the, every year that goes by, we will have better data. And so if we come up with a scheme, I, I think this hybrid makes sense to me, number three, that, that provides some common cost as one component. And then we could in five years say, now we have the data that we could, we could roll out a different scheme and that would provide those incentives. Because I think long-term, that's absolutely where we want to be. I think waiting until we have all that data is, we're, we're missing some opportunity there. And I think being able to implement a scheme and then say, now it's better because we can recognize all the conservation that we know is happening out there. And then, you know, just to respond to this comment about residential homes on the valley floor, I, I like Supervisor Gallagher, your point to make sure that we're looking at potential to support folks who really don't have capacity. I will also submit there are residents who do have capacity and who have extensive landscaping, right? So we want to make sure, I know when I've talked to growers, they say it's important to them that folks who are using water for landscaping are contributing to this, this scheme. So I, I wanted to echo that too. So are there other comments? Let's see. I'm coming back to Supervisor Ramos and then Supervisor Alessio again. Are you done? Okay. Supervisor Ramos.
Thank you. I just want to caution us from putting off the inevitable too much. I, I think it's important to understand why we're in this position. And these basins were identified by State Water Resources Board and we had the opportunity to take local control, that is in fact what the Groundwater Sustainability Agency is, to take local control and to determine our future on how we want to manage this basin to avoid the state coming in. That is what we're doing. And so every time that we try and put off the management plan and try and put off fees, we are, we are inviting the state to come into our backyard for water resource management. And we need to not do that. We have done a tremendous job in, in terms of leading up to the alternative plan application. The only reason we were denied our alternative plan is because we didn't have the 10 years of data. We were already doing it, the work, but we didn't have the 10 years of data. I, I truly am confident we would have had an approved plan had we had the 10 years of data. That being said, we need to do the management work. We need to be able to, to get ourselves into a position where we are encouraging the metering and the data so that we can get to a very trued-up approach. Nothing prevents us from going forward in 26, 27 to really push forth greater data collection so that we can come back, I say we, as in the board, who's ever here, come back at a later time and to revise that. The more proactive we are in our monitoring and, and in encouraging conservation, the greater chances we are, we have of, of one, ensuring that we don't end up with a, a high, what's the, a, a basin of high importance. I think that's the, the DWR lingo. But also to make sure that DWR doesn't get here. And so while I, I understand the concerns, at some point, we, we have to really look at what the county's obligations are. And the county's obligation is to manage. The county's obligation going forward is, is not in fact to, to bear all costs of this. This has to be a joint partnership. The general fund cannot sustain this cost going forward. So the sooner we work towards an, an approach, a hybrid approach that gets us started, the sooner we can actually have a, a true-up of tiered metering and tiered cost going forward. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Ramos. So I will look to staff now. Do you feel like you've gotten an earful from?
Not too much. No, that was perfect. That was the right amount of guidance. I think we resolved some questions that, that we had. Ryan, was there anything else that?
I don't think so. Thank you for the feedback.
Wonderful. Thank you both very much. And thanks again for the public input today. All right. So that brings us to item 11B, which is to adopt a resolution approving the Measure U five-year project list and receive a presentation on upcoming roads capital projects. Is Mr. Letterer in the room? I'm sorry? Okay. So we will just go ahead to item 13A, vacancies, recruitments, and retention efforts. And Ms. Bruseno is here.
Good morning. I'm Christine Bruseno. I'm the chair, I'm the Chief Human Resources Officer. And with me today, I have Fay Newton Shannon, who's my Assistant Chief. And today we'll be sharing a presentation regarding Assembly Bill 2561, which includes an overview of our vacancy data, a view of our recruitment and retention efforts, and a bit about how we've addressed some obstacles along the way. So what is AB 2561? California Assembly Bill 2561 was signed into law in September of 2024 and introduced measures to address staffing vacancies in local public agencies. Some key provisions include a requirement to hold an annual hearing like this one each fiscal year to present on the status of the vacancies, discuss recruitment and retention, and identify any obstacles to hiring. The bill emphasizes the role of recognized employee unions addressing vacancy issues and ensuring they have an opportunity to also address you during this hearing if they choose. AB 2561 also provides enhanced requirements for reporting if any bargaining group exceeds a 20% vacancy rate. These measures aim to enhance transparency and improve staffing levels. And this hearing is in fulfillment of this bill and its requirements and includes a collaboration with all of our union partners. This bill is silent on the window of time to be used for the purpose, so for the purposes of this discussion, we'll be using calendar year 2024 as our point in time.
Good morning, Board. So who are the recognized bargaining groups? Within each bargaining group, there are two units, both supervisory and non-supervisory. Our largest bargaining group is SEIU 1021, Napa Association of Public Employees. Our newest bargaining group is NCPPA, Napa County Probation Professionals Association. And our third recognized bargaining group is DSA, the Deputy Sheriff's Association. In addition to these groups, we also have unrepresented management and confidential employees. In the spirit of full transparency, we'll also share the vacancy information for this group as well.
So we'd like to start with our Deputy Sheriff's Association or DSA. DSA has 95 allocated positions that are non-supervisory and 21 supervisory allocations. We started the year, as you can see, at just above 16% of, of vacancy rate for our non-supervisory. And our recruitment team partners very closely with the sheriff's team all year. And we're happy to report that by the end of calendar year 2024, we ended at 11.58%. Just for fun, I had these numbers run for Friday afternoon and I can proudly share that we are down to 8.16% vacancies, or a total of eight open vacancies at this point in that bargaining group. We do meet regularly with the sheriff and his leadership team. And I would be remiss if I did not include that even though we've made major strides in filling these vacancies, it can take about a year for a new deputy to get through field training and for the workforce to actually feel the relief of those vacancies being filled. It also does not reflect obstacles such as leave statuses or work injuries, which never reflect in a report that's focused purely on vacancies. But I will say that we have a robust return to work program and leaves management partnership with the sheriff and his team to mitigate the effects of those as well. As an aside, our DSA MOU does expire at the end of September of this year and will enter into bargaining soon. Next, we have our Napa County Probation Professionals Association or NCPPA. Formed in 2022, they are the newest and smallest of our bargaining groups. Their non-supervisory group has 78.5 allocated positions with 8.75 vacancies as of December 2024. And their supervisory group has 11 with one vacancy at the end of 2024. It's important to note that in very small groups like this, just one vacancy can spike our vacancy rate. As you can see, we had one in October that did push it from 0 to 9%. And although we are making, we did make great strides in this group, you can see we started over 15% and moved down to 11 in the non-supervisory group. And as of Friday, we're actually down to 9.4%. So again, we're still making progress there. However, in the supervisory group, we did have a promotion, so now we have two in that group. And you can see that it will, it jumps from 9 to 16%, but that, that does not signify a problem. Since they are both supervisory, we, we want to just point out that these numbers are point in time because we anticipate that there'll be internals that will be interested in promoting into the supervisory position. So then it will fluctuate again in the, in the non-supervisory group. We do work closely with Chief Gibbs and her team to do continuous outreach. And we meet regularly and have a very active and collaborative relationship with NCPPA. And their contract goes through June of 2026. Our last recognized bargaining group is our largest. It is SEIU 1021, the Napa Association of Public Employees, or PSC for short. Their unit has just over 1,000 non-supervisory allocations, of which 109 were vacant in December of 2024, and 130 supervisory allocations with eight vacant at the end of the year. As you can see, we started at nearly 18 and 17% respectively. And our recruitment team did an amazing job partnering with the hiring managers and supervisors to reduce those vacancies, ending the calendar year at just over 10% for non-supervisory and just over 6% for supervisory. And I'm also happy to report that these efforts continue. And as of this last Friday, they are just above 9% and holding at 6% for supervisory. Napa County and PSC have a very long history. And our MOU was just renegotiated and it goes through 2027. And we work very closely with their leadership team and our mutual, in our mutual goal to have positive labor relations. Through transparent, open conversations, we reduce misunderstandings, we resolve disputes effectively, and this can lead to a more engaged workforce. Finally, we have our unrepresented group. This group is all of our management classes across the organization with the addition of our frontline staff of human resources and our payroll staff and of course, the staff of the CEO's office. There are 251.8 allocations as of December 2024 and there were 20 vacancies. As you can see, our recruiters and hiring managers worked to reduce this from over 16% at the beginning of 2024 down to 8%, or just under 8% in December. As of Friday, we're down to 6.21% in our management and confidential classes. So as an agency, our vacancy rate is at 9.8. And at the time that we were putting this slide deck together, we chose March 31st, 2025 to show the first quarter of 2025 and where we were. And that was at 8.65%. And as of Friday, we're at 8.57%. And just as a note, anything under a 10% vacancy rate is considered outstanding in the public sector. So we're very, very proud of this number. If I could for a moment, I'd like to say a special thank you to our classification and compensation specialist. Her name is Joy Kadish. She's with us today, who patiently pulled all of this data and, and the many, many iterations that we requested. And so she is definitely behind most of the slides that you see today. And there's a lot that went into our recruitment and retention efforts in 2024. But before we share what they did, we would like to share who they are. And they're sitting also with us today. And I'm glad to introduce our training and recruitment manager, Kevin Lemieux, and our recruiters, Grace Castor, Leah Medias, Liv Mangara, and Andur Carr.
So our recruitment team has been very busy. In calendar year 2024, the recruitment team completed 181 recruitments. There was a total of 304,831 individual clicks on our job bulletins. The recruitment team, along with representatives from county departments, participated in six job fairs in Northern California. Ads have been placed in hundreds of different printed and online publications. We received 5,741 applications, which as you can see, has increased over the prior two years. The average time from opening a recruitment to the referral of the list is 28 days. And when you consider that publication for most job postings is two weeks, this is an incredible feat. At the conclusion of each recruitment process, hiring managers and supervisors receive a survey requesting feedback on the overall experience. This includes identifying areas for improvement and providing input for the recruiter's performance. The recruitment team reviews all responses thoroughly and continuously and seeks opportunities to enhance our processes, improving engagement job postings, optimizing recruitment timelines, and expanding outreach efforts, all with the goal of attracting the most qualified and diverse candidate pool possible. In terms of satisfaction with their, with the assigned recruiter, we're proud to report a 100% satisfaction rate, with all respondents indicating that they're either satisfied or very satisfied. While there may be occasional concerns regarding the depth or quality of candidate pools, the consistent high marks reflect our recruiter's strong commitment to providing exceptional service and responsiveness throughout the recruitment process. So once we hire the employees, we must keep them engaged. In calendar year 2024, 98 employees graduated from a Napa County Professional Development Academy. There was a CEO-led employee appreciation and recognition event. In 2024, a winter recess was successfully negotiated and implemented for the first time with our largest union, SEIU. This new agreement allowed most of our employees the opportunity to fully unplug and recharge during the week between Christmas and New Year's Day. The county continues to offer tuition reimbursement program and longevity pay to most of our employees. HR has developed a comprehensive wellness program, which includes wellness reimbursement, online wellness seminars in partnership with Kaiser, a wellness fair, and additional initiatives planned for 2025. As you've observed, our team continues to make dedicated efforts to reduce time to fill for open positions, minimizing the impact of vacancies on our current employees.
Thank you Fay. In HR, our motto is how do we get to yes? It's usually not to the question we're being asked, but to the creative solution that'll actually address the problem or the issue or concern that's being brought before us. This leads me to this slide that is about overcoming obstacles. As I mentioned, we do partner closely with all of our department heads and hiring teams to learn what those obstacles might be and try to find creative solutions. In 2024, we heard that our hiring incentives was not having the impact we had hoped for. So we did a study and made recommended changes to be more competitive, including working with our sheriff's department to encourage lateral transfers. So we brought before you a recommendation in order to increase and create a ladder in order to incentivize deputy sheriffs with longstanding, uh, service experience to come in so we can reduce that relief and time to be productive and alleviate the workforce. And we heard that when we have staff on long-term leaves or pending retirements of key staff, that there was an administrative burden to getting resources in and trained to alleviate burnout of, of their coworkers. So we created a process to create limited-term positions as a bridge to fill those gaps. We expanded our Hiring Heroes Program by partnering with the US Army Partnership for Your Success or the PACE program, which provides a direct channel for veterans to be referred to our county for employment. be referred to our county for employment. And lastly, we partner heavily with each department's administrative teams to communicate to staff, process transactions, and identify issues. So we created a quarterly HR partner session to share information, provide trainings and refreshers on HR processes, and we have presentations from every unit in HR and leave plenty of times for questions. I open those sessions with Ask HR Anything, and we end them with Kevin's famous trivia in order to create engagement and continue to encourage communication, open lines of communication with HR, all in an effort to provide the highest level of service to the employees of Napa County. With that, this concludes our presentation and fulfillment of our obligation under 2561, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. First, before I take the questions, I just want to say thanks to you both and the whole team here. You know, when we have a law passed that adds a new requirement, we can say, oh my goodness, it's going to take a lot. You guys have gone above and beyond in giving us helpful information and letting us know more about what's happening in our organization. So thank you for that. So I will turn to Supervisor Gallagher and then Supervisor Ramos.
Great, thank you. Thank you both so much and to your team for all of the work and for getting this before budget. Thanks, that's great. I was wondering how this report breaks down by departments or divisions? And for example, is there any particular department or division, for example, within HHSA that is over ten, has an over ten percent vacancy?
There is one division within HHSA that is over ten percent, and that is in our Behavioral Health Department. They're around eighteen percent as of last week. But this, I'm very proud of this effort. That is a very, very difficult to recruit industry, and we've had kind of some ups and downs in that area, and that's the lowest it's been in quite some time. And they're making some major strides and constant efforts out in the Behavioral Health Group in order to encourage engagement and to recruit. So we're very, even though it sounds really high, again, they're small groups, so one or two vacancies can really spike that rate, but we're making great efforts there.
Yeah, it's really hard, I understand that, and I think putting that extra effort and putting your minds together with the department obviously is going to be really important to continue to do. And then have we hired any vets since the PAYS program started?
Two so far.
Okay, all right. What departments are they in?
I believe one is in Rhodes and one, I believe, at the Sheriff's Department.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Gallagher. I will go to Supervisor Ramos, and then I'll make sure to open it up for public comment.
Thank you. This is our first and new, so I have a couple of kind of background questions. I know what we're required to report out is on vacancies. Is this information distributed to our bargaining units? Do they have an opportunity to review it, and is there some sort of meet and confer process beforehand?
Yes, we do meet with, we do meet and confer quite frequently with all of our groups. Prior to developing this presentation, we did meet with them and explain to them what their vacancy rates look like, and reported out that none of our bargaining groups are over twenty percent. As I mentioned, if we did go over twenty percent, there's actually many more robust requirements of AB twenty-five sixty-one, including how many vacancies and applications received for each one. But none of us were there, so we did share what we were doing and that we were coming to you today, and they do have an opportunity to speak at public comment during this hearing. And so hopefully that answers your question.
Okay, and have any of the units said that they are going to speak or address us?
No one has responded to us that they were going to speak, but I do believe we do have some here for public comment.
My next question, you said something very interesting, which I think is what we've grappled with. Putting aside behavioral health that we know has been a struggle in terms of recruitment, you said something about work status, and so I think, I understand what our minimums are in reporting here, but I think it's important for us to understand work status and its relationship to workers' comp. You mentioned return-to-work initiatives. I would like to have a better, a better understanding of how, and this gets me to what comes next, and that's the budget, overtime budgets. And so if we have, if we have vacancies, that's one pressure point onto an overtime budget. And then if we have work absences that are related to injury, then that's another pressure on overtime budget. So did you pull those figures? Do we have an understanding? And I ask this in terms of, if we're hovering at ten percent, but the work status realities actually put us at twenty percent, then I think that's information that we need to know, because the practical effect for burnout to our employees is the exact same thing. Whether someone is out on, is on the books but out on leave, the impacts are still there. So I would like to know more information in terms of, what does that look like in terms of risk management, workers' comp management, and what the practical effects are being felt by our employees?
Sure, so I do have the data, and about eighteen months ago, I did absorb the workers' comp program, and that was really eye-opening before it did not live with human resources. And we sort of pushed it together with our leaves management program to learn more about its impacts on each. And I did, we do work very closely with the sheriff, especially because that is the concentration, it's twenty-four hour operations, and trying to understand how we can better support and get our deputies back to work more quickly. Because the sooner they come back, the more likely it is that they're going to stay engaged, and they get healthy a little faster. It's all in the numbers. And so right now, we do have fifteen officers on some sort of leave, two of them are pending our return to work. So that coupled with those eight vacancies puts us about twenty-one. With a hundred in this bargaining group, around a hundred in this bargaining group, it does sort of start to spike us there, right? We do have three deputy sheriff trainees that are in academy right now. Again, it takes them a year to get up to speed, so we're constantly monitoring and trying to work together in order to have some creative solutions. And ultimately, and I know the sheriff is here, we do eventually get to a place where we do need to use overtime, and that is what's identified in the recent report.
Thank you. So on the trainees that are in academy, they are in our ninety-five. Looking at the slide, it's non-supervisory ninety-five. Are they included in that number or excluded in that number?
They are excluded because our deputy sheriff trainee is actually represented by SEIU until they become sworn, and then they move over.
Ah, so they are in the?
Eight.
They are in the ten-twenty-one number?
Yes.
Isn't that the same number as the union?
Yes.
Okay, that's weird. Work on that. So the trainees are in the ten-twenty-one number?
Yes.
Okay, and why, I guess my question would be, if someone is unavailable to deliver services, why do we include that in the total employee number?
So they're in allocated positions within SEIU, not in the Deputy Sheriff's Association. So technically, they are reflected as non-available resources in the eight vacancies, right? So those vacancies are not filled with an actual sworn officer until they are sworn out of academy and moved their allocation from SEIU over into DSA.
I guess I would just, if we have people away for sabbaticals, and what I'm trying to get at is, the more information we have, the better off we'll be, and I understand that these are the minimums. But if we are to list our employees, then we should also list who is unavailable to report to work, if they are in school or some sort of sabbatical. That would be important for us to really understand. Also, the realities of work status, I think, would be really important to reflect going forward, because even as we discuss at the deputy sheriffs, if they're hovering at eight, nine percent, ten percent, the reality of what is being felt is twenty-one percent. And I think we need to really be mindful of that, especially, I think having, I would ask for staff, when we are going to have negotiations open up with our employees, it'd be great for us to be able to have a snapshot of that bargaining unit updated. I understand that this is annualized, but if we're going to go in with the deputy sheriffs and contracts due in October, it'd be great before the opening of negotiations to have an updated snapshot with realities of work status, and then to do that with probation when they're up and to do it with the public employees when they're up. Thank you.
So Supervisor Alessio, I see your light is on. With your permission, I'd love to open it up for public comment, so anyone who's in the room could speak today. Thank you.
Just briefly to Supervisor Ramos's comments, I just wanted to share, we're keeping a track of not just our vacancies, but, and I compare it to the weather, when you see the weather like in Chicago, this is the temperature, but it feels like, and what the real temperature is. So because we have injuries, we have people in the academy that can't fill a twenty-four hour shift yet, we have people on FTO, we have people on maternity leave, we have, I believe, three deputy sheriffs that are active reserve, one of them currently deployed. So I told the management staff, just plan for, at some point in window in time, somebody's going to be on deployment if we have three, just kind of, just plan for that absence. So the deputies are stepping up. Every team in our department is, at some level, short-staffed, except for our corners. Our two corner detectives are currently fully staffed, but everybody's rolling up their sleeves, they're working hard, they're picking up extra shifts. You know, we're twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and the deputies are really stepping up to the plate. Nobody's being mandated at this point to work overtime. It's all on a voluntary basis, so, and we have some people that are volunteering to pick up those extra shifts, especially Lake Bariessa as the summer comes on. So we're doing what we can with what we have. We appreciate the partnership of HR and everything HR's done to create those limited-term positions. We have people in the academy. There's light at the end of the tunnel, but it's a very long light, or a very long tunnel, I should say. And then, as we've identified, that we're just not getting the lateral applicants. Again, this board and HR really helped get us to a different signing bonus, which will hopefully get us a few applicants, because the laterals do staff a shift much sooner. You know, they generally take about eight weeks, and they're on their own. So thank you for your partnership, HR, and thank you both supervisors.
Thank you, Sheriff. Great to have you here. Good morning, just barely.
Exactly, couple minutes left. Thank you very much, my name is Nick DiGiulio, I'm a sergeant at the Napa County Sheriff's Office. So there's a nationwide crisis in law enforcement, recruiting and retention, and it's finding its way here. On paper, so my numbers are a little bit different, but, so we have eight vacancies or actual vacant positions, and then fifteen deputies who are out on some sort of injury recovery. And then add to that vacant positions that are allotted to trainees or deputies who are on FTO, we're running somewhere, it's pushing thirty percent of a hundred-person or a hundred deputy sworn department who aren't available to fill shifts. Those vacancies are combination of temporary and possibly permanent. Some of these deputies will come back, but there are deputies who are currently out on injury who will not come back, they're career-ending injuries, and it's just a matter of moving through that recovery process to get them physically able to where they can continue working somewhere else, but they're not going to be able to come back and fulfill a law enforcement position. There are deputies that are on field training, I think we have three currently, and then over the course of the summer, we're going to have five more who will hopefully be graduating from the academy and then moving into field training. Those deputies hopefully will be able to fill patrol position on their own within six to twelve months, but statistically, it's not likely that they will all, A, graduate from the academy, and then after the academy, be able to move into our field training program, and then also be able to complete the field training program and become solo deputies on their own. So it's at a minimum six months, up to twelve months, fifteen months additionally in that time. As far as lateral applications go, in the last two years, we've had one, or correction, we had two lateral applicants successfully complete our program, apply, and become employed with us in the last two years, and one in the last six months who was previously employed with us and has returned after working elsewhere. As everybody is aware, Napa is an expensive place to live, and our recruiting and retention is greatly affected by the cost of living here, and trying to get deputies who, A, want to come work here and can afford to live here. So we appreciate the signing bonus that was approved for in the last year, and hopefully we will be able to build on that and continue to recruit additional employees here. So the staffing level, the staffing levels that we're at now put a strain on deputies. Give it about five more seconds, because the, sorry. Our jobs have to be filled one way or the other, so if we don't have bodies to fill every position, that slack needs to be picked up by other employees who are there. It's not stuff that can be left vacant. So the people that are here are filling those positions and doing it with overtime and skipping vacations and stuff like that. So I appreciate your time and the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiGiulio.
Hi, good afternoon now. My name is Justin Monroe. I'm a deputy with the Sheriff's Department and a treasurer with the Deputy Sheriff's Association. Just to follow up a little bit on Sergeant DiGiulio. Sorry, I'm trying to kind of find where we're at here. The Sheriff's Department, or Sheriff's Office does not currently offer enough monetary incentives or other incentives to attract lateral deputies that bring extensive knowledge and experience to the sheriff's office and can be released solo in an abbreviated program. Our current staffing levels, as Nick mentioned, often reduce patrol coverage to an alarmingly low level. As we speak right now, there are, I believe, one sergeant and two deputies covering Napa Valley. So it's just not to a level that anybody wants or expects. The low staffing levels also contribute to officer fatigue and accelerate burnout as deputies find themselves working fourteen to sixteen-hour days, extra shifts, and covering multiple positions within the office. This does not even address the contract overtime for special events like Laanda and Bottle Rock, which we have upcoming, or the training that we provide to the county and other agencies such as active shooter or rescue task force trainings, things like that. The DSA also includes ten sworn law enforcement investigators that worked for the District Attorney's Office. In August of 2024, an open DA investigator was, position was created. After the planned retirement of Chief Pate, multiple interview panels had to be conducted due to low number of qualified candidates applying for the position. One position is expected to be filled by mid-May in twenty, mid-May 2025. In addition to this position, two other DA investigators are out on long-term disability and may possibly never return to work. Because of the above-mentioned issues, the DA Investigations Unit has been working at staffing levels thirty percent below normal for a small office that's very impactful. This has led to multiple denied vacations and prevents DA investigators from using their earned vacation time. In some instances, DA investigators are only able to get days off if they conduct shift trades with other employees. DA investigators have also been unable to attend trainings because of the low staffing levels. We, as the Deputy Sheriff's Association Board, expect that in the next several years, retirements, career-ending injuries, and deputies leaving to pursue better opportunities at outside agencies will exacerbate our current problems recruiting and retaining deputies. The current and foreseeable staffing issues are a genuine and growing concern for our members. We also believe that the sheriff's office is the premier law enforcement agency in Napa County, and we pride ourselves on the service we provide to our community, and we hope to continue that going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. All right, is there anyone else in the room or on the phones? Okay, then I will bring it back to the board. Supervisor Alessio.
Thank you, and I'll keep this short, because I know we're getting late, and you gave us a time warning in the beginning. Well, not to be too glib, but the HR Department- us a time warning in the beginning. Well, not to be too glib, but the HR department has no, you've got a job of security in what you do, and incredibly impressed by the number of applications that you go through, the ability to hire in such an expensive community, as been mentioned here. I do have a question, because I know, you know, with COVID, the work from home was, was something that, you know, we were all able to do, required to do, and then some folks found that provided more quality of life, and they were seeking jobs that had that kind of flexibility. Do you have an estimation, like what percentage of our staff is still working from home or has accommodation a day or two a week?
So we have always had one telework policy from the time of COVID, and that was two days maximum per week. And many of our employees do take advantage of that. However, there are some positions that just don't, just don't support that. And so that is up to a department head on the, identifying the positions that have that ability, but it is limited across the entirety of the organization to up to two days per week.
Okay, that sounds fair, and it sounds like a good incentive. And is that competitive out there in the jurisdictional marketplace?
It depends. I'm on the board of the California County's Human Resources Administrators Group, which is a subset of CSAC, and we talk a lot about this. And some of our jurisdictions are, went full remote and are really struggling with their work cultures and with getting that workforce back to the, back to work. And so there are some, especially some of our millennials, our younger generation, who, who will apply here and see that we're limited to two days and will pull their apps. It's just the nature of what we do, but we have negotiated that policy with our unions, and they are also supportive because having face-to-face contact with your supervisor, with your management, clear expectations, one-on-ones, it really does work for us here.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a great incentive, and it does create that work-life balance, but it also is challenging on team efforts, team morale, and, and is, can't be included with, you know, the sheriff's department. They can't, they can't call it in or remote in. So let's see here. In terms of your overall percentage, that's really competitive with the city of Napa. I want you to know, when I was on the city of Napa, it's pretty similar. You know, if they can, we can get to that 10% or below 10%, we were always told that's, that's a, that's a solid number, though it's still a lot in terms of work to be done. I was gonna say something else. I've got a couple notes, but I think I'm getting a little, I think I'm ready for lunch and a cup of coffee. But anyways, thank you to your team, thank you to staff, thank you to our deputies, our sheriff's department deputies for being here, for letting us know what's going on. I know it's very, very tough, and we appreciate the work you do, along with our county sheriff. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Alessio. Supervisor Gallagher.
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge the DSA representatives. I think, you know, it's, obviously, you're, you're feeling 30%. You're not feeling the eight or 10. And I think it just points out the very close connection between what we can do and what our cities can do in partnership around housing that is affordable and being able to really recruit people. I think we can certainly look at other types of incentives, but there's a much bigger problem in terms of affordability. But really want to acknowledge that you all are doing really, really hard work, and it's, it's hard because your jobs are hard already, and then doing the extra time is, you know, difficult. So thank you for being here and for sharing your, your perspective.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallagher. Well said. Supervisor Ramos and then Supervisor Manfree.
Thank you so much, and thank you to staff. I know it's our first go-around. I think it would be really helpful to be able to include the, to the, to the board as just a, not through an agenda as item, but to get to a spreadsheet that includes the vacancies. I think anything over 15% in a division or department, whether that's the combination of the vacancies itself, like in behavioral health or the, or the work status realities through injuries, is something that we need to, to be aware of. And it seems like we, we have heard today, we have two particular areas that we, we have concerns with. Another one, and this is probably more a referral for the sheriff, what I am most interested in here is, we have contracts with other jurisdictions for services, and that is in American Canyon and in Yountville. And so I'd like to understand the, the impacts on, on your staffing levels and what that means to those jurisdictions. Just hearing today that we have one sergeant and two deputies for patrol in the entire county, when we certified today that we have 415 miles of county roads and a lot of opportunity for accidents, and of course, all the policing, community policing that happens in addition to that. I'd like to understand a little bit more of, of what those impacts are for the jurisdictions that we serve.
Thank you.
Yeah, just real quick to, to your point, Supervisor Ramos. So for radio calls for service patrol, that's, unfortunately, that's probably the reality, is we have one sergeant and two deputies. We also have detectives, pop deputies, school resource officers. We have resources out there, but as far as radio calls, yeah, we're, we are at short-staffing levels today. And generally, we try to keep it at three plus one, which is also short, but that's kind of what we're, our unofficial minimum for the actual radio call. But we compensate our radio calls capacity with our, what are the resources that we have, what other guns and badges that we have working to try to make sure that that, we can respond to when we need to. To the contracts, we do work closely with City Manager of American Canyon, as well as the Town Manager of Town of Yountville. There's some growth that we're delaying in American Canyon just because of the staffing challenges, and we're also talking to the Town of Yountville about, you know, it'll, it'll mean less revenues for my budget, for budget conversations, because we're gonna take a quarter off of a backfield position and use it with our radio call, regular patrol cars, so that we can, we're just basically doing a shell game with the bodies we have until we get people trained. We anticipate three people getting off training this summer, and that'll help quite a bit. And then we'll have several people on FTO, but it's, it's gonna be, like I said, it's a long tunnel, but the FTOs themselves, they don't bat a thousand, generally speaking. You know, 15, 20% of our trainees don't make the program, and we don't intend to move our standards. That's gonna, that's gonna maintain, you know, we want high standards for people to complete the program, but they're doing a fantastic job. You know, eight out of 10 of our trainees are successful.
Thank you, Sheriff. Supervisor Manfree.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to the HR staff, to the sheriff, to sheriff's deputies and representatives of the DSA for being here today. This is really informative for me, and I'm looking forward to learning more about it as we go through the budgeting process. I agree that more detail would be helpful, especially for some of those larger categories where there, you know, there's a lot of employees that we're talking about with just one or two numbers. I'm sure there's more detail there that can help us drill into what is working better, and we can learn from that for the things that aren't working so well. So yeah, just incredibly informative for me. Thank you so much for, for putting this together.
Thank you, Supervisor Manfree. Yeah, thanks again, everyone, for being here today and for all the work you do. And I also just want to thank our county leadership. I noticed that the numbers of applicants we're getting has increased from 22 to 23 and 23 to 24, and I think that's an indication that, you know, we've had positive leadership, and that sends a message to prospective employees too. So thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. So with that, we are now going to take up item 11. Let's see, this is B. It is B. I think I have to use a different color on the form next time. Okay, and so on 11B, we will adopt a resolution approving the Measure U five-year project list and receive a presentation on upcoming roads capital projects. Good afternoon, Mr. Letterer.
Good afternoon. Sorry, I was late before. I was, you transitioned away from groundwater a little faster than I expected you to. So I was in the elevator, but it was very interesting to hear the, the HR report as well. Our engineering staff is fully staffed with the exception of one position, and we have an, an accepted offer on that, and we're recruiting, I think, for one roads person. Otherwise, we're fully staffed at that point. So thanks again for HR. Very good. Oh, good, the presentation is, is up. So let me, there we go. So the actual action today is to approve a resolution which includes a list of projects will be, which will be included in our Measure U plan over the next five years. That's a requirement. In order to get Measure U money, we have to have a five-year plan. But, so we have to remember to do that when we're done. But the board had also asked for a broader overview of roads capital projects, because the Measure U is a, is a big piece of it, but it is far from the only piece. So I wanted to start just with a little bit of background of how our capital projects are chosen, how our roads projects are chosen, and they're chosen by science, not by, not by whim, not by popular vote, frankly, not by politics. They're, they're chosen by science. So every two years, we do what's called a pavement management plan where, and we hire a third-party certified consultant to go out and inspect our 415 miles of roads. And they go out there and they determine the pavement condition index or the PCI of each individual road. This used to be done by hand. People would go out with clipboards. They would look at a road and say, yeah, I think it's kind of a this, or I think it's kind of a that. In the past few cycles, that's actually become automated, where a vehicle goes out, it takes video of the roads, and then the, the video is analyzed electronically, and that number, that number comes out. What those numbers do then is those numbers are plugged into a computer program called StreetSaver, and StreetSaver looks for the most efficient way to spend our money on those roads. What's really important here and is really oftentimes not understood, is this is not a worst-first analysis. We often hear somebody say, well, why do you work on that road? You know, my road is worse than, than that road. The, the way roads deteriorate is it's very important to do maintenance on roads that are in pretty good shape before they cross over into really bad shape. So what we find, just as an example, is if you have a million dollars, you could use that million dollars over 10 miles of road that is in pretty good shape as opposed to just one mile of road that needs to be rebuilt and is in bad shape. And if you don't do that maintenance on the roads that are in pretty good shape, a year or two down the road, you know, have 10 more miles that require $10 million of repairs. So the computer will pick out that balance between working on roads that are in decent shape and keeping them that way before they deteriorate, and then also drop down and pick up some roads that need to be rebuilt, because eventually you've got to get to, get to those two. Very big picture. Gas tax, historically, the gas tax is paid for road maintenance. In 1993, both the state of California and the federal government updated the gas tax in 1993 based on conditions at the time. Since then, the federal government has actually not changed the gas tax since 1993. I went into ChatGPT, and I asked it, what was the Board of Supervisor's salary in 1993, and it said $35,000. So think about the buying power of what that $35,000 was in 1993 compared to today. So when people say, how did our roads get to where they are? That's the simple answer, is that the gas taxes were paying for roads. We did not increase the value of the gas tax. Since then, our cars are more efficient. So in fact, we're, we're in many ways selling less gas. A pure electric car is not paying any gas tax. Obviously, all, all cars are more efficient than, than they used to be. Looking forward, we actually are gonna have to get to a system that's really based more on vehicles' miles traveled as opposed to gasoline sold, because if, for instance, if we get to 100% electric vehicles, the, the current system isn't gonna work. But I digress. So the good news, well, let me just say, so our, our pavement condition index, our PCI, actually dropped to 45 a couple of years ago, roughly $400 million in deferred maintenance. So the good news is that in, in 2012, although it didn't start collecting money until 2018, the voters of Napa County passed Measure T, which was a half-cent sales tax, which gets us about $10 million a year towards roads maintenance. Also, the voters of the state of California also around 2018 passed SB1 or voted for SB1, which was an increase, finally, an increase in the state gas tax. Federal gas tax has never been increased, but the state, the state with SB1 did, and that gives us another $3 million or so. So those are the core elements of funding for our roads programs. The board has periodically supplemented that. In 2020 or so, we, we received a 20, I'm sorry, a $33 million settlement with PG&E from the various fires that we had, and the board dedicated $16 million of that 33 to, to roads maintenance, which was great. That money has been spent, with the exception, just a very little bit. Also, in 20, I believe it was 2021, the board committed $20 million of, of general fund money, which went into the accumulated capital outlay or capital improvement fund, I think we call it the CIF Fund now. 13 of that $20 million has been spent. There's about $7 million left, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a little bit. So, okay, and I, I will mention, as I said, Measure T, which is going to be Measure U on July 1st. SB1 are sort of the key elements, but there, there are other funds that go into roads projects, including money from FEMA, usually associated with previous disasters, Federal Highway Administration, FHWA, and HBP, which is the Highway Bridge Program. That's how our bridges generally get replaced. STIP, which is, which is state money, that's, that's Caltrans money, and the STIP actually was a significant part of rebuilding the interchange at Soscol and 29. A lot of that was, was STIP money. Hopefully, we'll get to rebuild the interchange at Airport Boulevard and 29 at some point. That'll probably be future STIP money. HSIPE is the Highway Safety Improvement Fund. Their grant programs come out every couple of years, and we've been very successful with HSIPE, and I'm gonna talk about a couple of those projects, and I mentioned PG&E. All of these programs are pay-as-you-go or, or cash flow at the, at the moment. Measure T was certainly set up that way. It did not allow for bonding, which would allow you to bring money forward. Measure U has changed that, and I will, I will talk about that. Some of these programs actually need to be cash flowed. So for instance, the HSIPE program, this year, we get a, we got a million dollars, 100%, no county match, 100% for replacing guardrails. So it's free money, but we've got to cash flow it. We've got to put the money upfront, do the work, and then get the money back. So even that creates some, some challenges. So let me, so that's all the background. And I'm sorry for covering all that. Some of you, certainly Supervisor Ramos, has heard all that before, but we do have some new supervisors, and I realize it's important, you know, there may be one member of the public who's never heard this before. So, so I do try and cover this every time we do this. So just looking at, at some of the projects from, that we completed last summer, we, a lot of focus on crossroads. I wanted to focus on east-west. As you all know, the county, at least the county floor is basically a ladder. You have Silverado Trail on one side, Highway 29 on the other, and then we have all these crossroads. And all elements of the ladder are really important for the, the county circulation to work. So last year, we completed Yountville Cross, Tubbs Lane, Donawea, Larkmead, also sections of Silverado Trail, and then in the South County, Salvador, Sunnydale, which is a little off-sticker from Salvador, El Centro, Orchard, and did some work on the, on the Vine Trail. Also, so those were all funded by Measure T. We also had a number of projects that were not funded by Measure T. We paved all the roads in the Berriessa Estates. That was SB1 money. That hadn't been done in close to two decades. So nice project there. We also do annual maintenance projects. We also do annual maintenance projects. Every year, we put a certain money, a certain amount of money away for fixing guardrails. We don't have the capability to do that in-house, so once a year, we gather up all our guardrails and do a contract and, and catch up. We also do striping on a contract on an annual basis. Inkrade Road, I just want to mention, this was a situation where Inkrade was actually not on the five-year plan, and we got to talking with the resident out there, and we said, you know, we really just don't have the money to do this. And he said, what if I wrote you a check? And we said, that would be great, and he did, and we paved Inkrade Road. So there is the ability for local areas, if they want to, to help bring funds to the table. That's happened at Inkrade. It's actually happened in a couple of different other areas. And I've got three or four conversations going on with different people who might be, might be interested in doing that. I'm not going to go through all of them, but we, we did do some other paving. We did a number of slide repairs. Mount Veda Road, three-point-nine-nine. This was not this year's storms, that was from previous storms. We replaced a bridge, Charles Pope Valley Road Bridge, which is a nineteen-twenty-three bridge that was ready to be replaced, and we completed that project. That was Highway Bridge Program money. We replaced the Partridge Road Bridge, which was a bridge that was damaged in the twenty-fourteen earthquake. Did take about ten years working through the FEMA process, but we got that done this year. So that was last year. Looking forward to this year, twenty twenty-five, some of the more significant ones, we'll be doing another section of Silverado Trail from just south of where Con Valley Road, State Route One Twenty-eight crosses. Silverado Trail, there, there's a small section there that's a Caltrans section, actually, but from about there up to Zinfandel, we'll be continuing our cross, crossroads work on Bale Lane, Lowdy Lane, West Zinfandel. We got a nice package going for Gordon Valley, Wooden Valley Cross, and a small section of Wooden Valley Road, plus a section of Circle Oaks, Country Club Lane, and Sunny Hill. And we've also got a nice project out in Carneros, Cuttings Wharf Road, which is sort of the main, one of the main passageways for that, that area from One Twenty-One into the neighborhoods. Oh, I do want to mention on, on Silverado Trail and a couple of other places, we're trying to implement some bike safety elements. I mean, all of our projects actually have bike safety elements to it. We've been adding the green pavement, conflict markings on the road. We've been improving signage. We do whatever we can with marking bar, bike lanes, and of course, repainting and, and paving. But specific to this Silverado Trail section, we're going to look at adding some buffers, painted buffers, as well as some type of rumble strip, and, and see how, see how that works. Also, in twenty twenty-five, I mentioned Gordon Valley, we'll also be paving the upper section of Whitehall Lane and Langtree Lane, and to see how things change. Since I put this slide deck together, we, we did have a project out in the upper section of Berriessa Knoxville Road, the, kind of the northern twelve miles of that road, or the, the least traveled road in the county. But it, it's, it's rough. It, it's really rough. So we, we were looking at trying to do something there, but something else came up. We actually got an opportunity to work with the City of Napa. They are paving their section of Trancas, and there was an opportunity to do a joint project, to do our section of Trancas, which is essentially from the Napa River down to, to Silverado Trail. So we pivoted in that case to take, take the opportunity of doing an important project with our partner and saving some money doing that. So that's twenty twenty-five. Again, not going to go through all of them. Oh, I do want to mention the Dry Creek Bridge replacement project is a project that either came to your board today or be coming at the next meeting, I forget which, but anyway, we'll be starting the replacement of the, the Dry Creek Road Bridge as well. Looking forward, a number, number of projects coming in, in the coming years. Deer Park Road, as well as the areas of College and White Cottage. PG&E recently completed undergrounding projects. They're in the process of completing under, undergrounding projects there. We've had a great partnership with PG&E over these last couple of years. We, in the past, we really struggled to communicate with them, and, you know, kind of where are you going and what are you doing? And that's really been solved. They've really, really come to the table. We meet with them every two weeks and talk about what they're doing, and we talk with them about what we're doing, and that's worked out really well. Couple of other key projects coming up next year, Tower Road and South Kelly Road down near the airport. South Kelly from Devlin to Twenty-Nine, half of that road belongs to American Canyon, half belongs to the county. The center line is actually the, the city line, if you will. So obviously, we are going to do that project together. They'll do the south part, you know, we'll pay for the south part, and, I'm sorry, they'll pay for the south, we'll pay for the north. They're actually managing, they're, they're taking the lead on that one, and we're working with them, and then along with them, along with that Tower Road as well. Hope to work with the City of Napa next year. I think everyone's familiar with the period of, of this, the section of Redwood Road from Dry Creek down to Browns Valley, and then Redwood continues in the county and up the hill. But that, that section there goes city, county, city, county, city, county. So hoping to, to team with the city. Not sure who's going to take the lead on it, but I've been talking with Julie over at the city and hoping we can do those together. Solano and Solano Avenue and Partridge, we had planned to do Solano this year, but there's a hotel, hotel project being built there, and it just kind of made more sense to coordinate with those. Those are two of the projects, Solano and Partridge, that we're going to use up the last of the twenty million dollars that the board gave us. We, we think we're okay on that. There had been a lot of other commitments into the CIF funds, and I, we think we're going to be okay on those two, and be able to do those. And then I mentioned Tower. I will mention the Devlin Road Saskel Ferry Roundabout Project is actually designed, but there's not enough money. That money, that project is going to be paid for by the Traffic Mitigation Fund, which is a fund that collects fees from development at the airport. In the past, each time we wanted to do a project there, and it's mostly how Devlin Road got built, the CIF was able to do a loan to the TMF in order to fund the project, and then the TMF would pay back. Not a hundred percent sure that we have the ability to do that loan, so that project is pretty much ready to go, but it, it may wait, it may wait a year or two while we're catching up on the funding for everything else. Looking forward, and I know, I know it's lunchtime and everyone wants to go, so you, of course, have this, this slide deck in, in your packet, as does the public. I'll also mention, attached to this agenda item is not only the five-year list in the Measure U list, which is what the resolution is, but also a spreadsheet that I maintain. And that's a spreadsheet that's a living document. I probably make changes to that, usually minor changes to it every week, but I also send it out on a weekly basis. That was part of my end-of-week email on what's going on with roads, so, and that also gets published to the county website on a weekly basis as it, as it gets updated. And that, that spreadsheet is really the, the whole picture, if you will, as to everything that's planned. So in twenty twenty-seven, I'll just mention, probably the biggest thing we're doing then is Napa Sanitation District has a huge sewer project out in the county pocket in the Pueblo area, colloquially known as the Girl Streets. So we'll be, we'll be teaming with Napa San as they dig up the road. We'll be coming behind and paving the roads behind them. It should be a, a great project. There is a theme here. There's a, there's a lot of work we can do with our neighboring agencies, and we really try and do that. There's a lot of economies of scale that, that makes a ton of sense. Looking out to Twenty-eight and Twenty-nine, and again, I don't need to necessarily go through all the projects, they're in the spreadsheet, but this is, this is where Measure U comes in. So we don't know what the bond market will look like in twenty twenty-seven. So this is, this is a plan, which is the, I estimated, in a perfect world, selling about seventy million dollars worth of bonds in the twenty twenty-seven timeframe, and that actually ties with NVTA that wants to sell bonds at the same time. The seventy million dollars is basically the most amount of money that I thought we could efficiently spend with the resources, with the resources we have. So it's an, it's, it's an estimate, and again, it also assumes that there is a bond market with the right interest and the right buyers at, at that time. Maybe, you know, it might be a great bond market, it may not. So it's, it's a plan based on what we know today, recognizing there's a ton of stuff that we don't, but the plan was twenty twenty-seven, sell about thirty, third, I'm sorry, seventy million dollars in bonds, which gives us two years. When you sell a bond, you need to identify the exact projects, and you need to complete them within three years. So I wanted to pick a number that I knew we could execute on in the right timeframe. So that's the plan. We'll just have to watch the markets, and as we get closer, see if that makes sense. Maybe that number could go up, maybe it should go down, maybe we don't sell bonds at all because it's the wrong time to do it, but that's basically the plan. So twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine, and then more projects out in twenty thirty, and that's, that's five years, and I have trouble predicting what I'm going to do next week, so, but anyway, that's the plan. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and again, the board requested action is to approve that resolution when you're ready, if you're ready.
Great, thank you. I think this is great to get every year just an update, so, and appreciate the background, especially this year. I am happy to take any questions from my colleagues. I have a question. I, you and I talked about Hardin Road yesterday, and I'm also concerned about Con Valley Road, and the, my question there, I know it's on for twenty thirty, but in terms of the formula or the algorithm, like you said, a lot is, is based on the condition of the road, but it's my understanding that's also, there's a, a factor of how, how much traffic the road gets, and something like Con Valley that is rural, has different residences and vineyards on it, but it also has at the end of it, Moore Creek Park, which, you know, for, for very good reasons, is getting a lot of traffic. So is, is an increased traffic component, can we build that into the formula?
Yeah, that, that's an element, and we do do our traffic counts in-house, and we're actually, next week, because you asked, doing traffic counts on Hardin and Pope Canyon Road and Pope Valley Cross, I, I believe, are the roads. Anyway, the number of roads, so, and that is one of the factors that, that feeds in. Of course, Silverado Trail will always have a higher count than Con Valley, as an example. And the, the mountain roads really are a challenge in the sense that they're, they're really long, which means they're really expensive. So with those, oftentimes, it's a matter of chopping away, you know, sort of a piece at a time. I'll do these two miles, or I'll do those two miles. So, yes. Anyway, to answer your question, the, the traffic counts do play an element in it, and we do do traffic counts, and when we do our next pavement management plan in twenty twenty-six, those traffic, those current traffic counts will be fed into the, the system.
That's great. And I know something like Moore Creek, probably similar to Skyline, right? Those numbers bump up significantly during the weekend, so making sure we're doing counts on those times would be great. Supervisor Alessio, and then Supervisor Ramos.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve, for this. And I really appreciate working so closely with PG&E, the different jurisdictions, the City of Napa. You and I, when we took a tour of Mount Veda and Dry Creek after the horrendous storms that we had, and, and all the work you're doing, and thank you for your, your team and your leadership in terms of repairing those with retaining walls, so it's a longer fix. We also looked at, the, you know, it's, it's an ongoing issue in terms of Mount Veda and Dry Creek, because as you say, quote-unquote, the mountain continues to move, and, and the roads that were cut there originally were in the, you know, pioneer days of eighteen-seventies, eighties, whatever. So it wouldn't be something that we would necessarily do, or how we would do today if we were to create roads in that area. So we're, we're kind of fighting against nature. And I'm looking, as I looked ahead through your five-year plan, I really appreciate this spreadsheet. This is great, too. Helps a lot. You know, there's a lot of investment that's needed up there, and same time, there's that public safety issue of vehicles and cyclists that are up there, that's also conflict, can be conflict. We kind of threw out, I'm going to throw this out, is, you know, maybe, and I haven't talked to anybody, but tell me more about, we talked about like road districts. Like if the, if the Mount Veda and/or Dry Creek wanted to create a road district and help subsidize or pay for it, as you said, as private payers have done, tell me a little bit more about that, in case that's something that could work in that area or any area of the county.
Yeah, so there are two different ways of, of doing this. One would be the more informal way, which is what we did at Inkrade, where someone simply volunteered to provide a certain amount of money to do a certain project. We do a contract with that person, they commit to money, we commit to a certain amount of project. So that, that's sort of one level, and that's what has been done primarily in the past. The more formal way to do it is to create, and it's got different names, but I'm going to call it a community facilities district. There, there are different terms, but basically, let's suppose all the folks who lived along Mount Veda decided that this was important to them, and they wanted to create a, a community facilities district. We would do a study to say, well, this is the, this is the project, so basically, this is the cost. Let's say they wanted the whole road paved and rebuilt, and it's a nine-mile road, and let's say the cost was nine million dollars.
And don't forget the retaining walls that we need.
And, and let's throw in retaining walls, so now we're up to twenty-five. But whatever, whatever the number is, we would identify what the scope of the project is and what the cost, and then there would be a study done to identify the benefits that each parcel receives. So for instance, and again, these, these are just typical examples, that perhaps the first parcel at the very bottom of the road might get less benefit out of that than the one who lived all the way at the top of the road. So anyway, there's, there's an engineering analysis that identifies the, the value that each, each parcel is getting. There would be a rate associated with that, and then the community members would, would take a vote. There would be a, a vote, and if they passed it, then that essentially gives the county the authority, it essentially becomes a tax. We would have the authority to tax those people to bring in money to do those projects. So it's a voluntary thing, it's not something that the county would drive. It would be something that the community would decide they want to do, and then the, the county would, of course, make sure the process was done correctly. So that would be a formal community facilities district, and it could be done for a limited period of time, or there are times when it's done essentially in, in perpetuity. So I hope that answers your questions, or a couple, you know, a couple of different ways of, of doing it.
Yeah, no, I think that's, I, you know, I don't, I can't speak up on those neighbors, but I know it's an, it's been such a historical issue, and, you know, trying to think of creative ways, that if the neighbors had the bandwidth and the desire to do something like this, especially if it wasn't, you know, they did the major infrastructure, such as, like you said, the retaining walls with the roads, and it's got life to it, right? And then the roads wouldn't be as expensive to replace because you're not losing the roads, you know, down the, the side of the, the hill there. So it's just, it's just a thought. And so that would be, in terms of the vote, would that be like a ballot measure? Would that be actually like unofficial ballot measure, or would that be less formal?
Oh, no. It'd be a formal process.
Okay, formal process. Okay, thank you. Thank you for mentioning Solano Avenue and Partridge Road. Solano Avenue gets a lot of traffic, and I was going to ask a very similar question about, you know, how much traffic is on these roads? And we've got not just vehicles, but we also have, you know, cyclists. And, and the reason we have them back on Solano is because the Vine Trail there is so popular along that stretch. Vine Trail there is so popular along that stretch, that cyclists that are, are cycling at a pretty good clip, it's not safe for them, or for the folks that are on the Vine Trail to kind of share that space, because people can jump in front of you, and dogs and kids can, you know, so the cyclists are back on Solano Avenue, um, because of that. So I want to make sure, I know we're, we're postponing it, and it makes a lot of sense. As you said, there's a, uh, an end being developed there at the corner of West Oak Knoll and Solano, they're going to be doing some, um, infrastructure and, and the road, and they have a percentage of that in front of their property that they're also responsible for, to help with that, with that cost. And so, and then part of it, as we know, leading up to, there's, the city has their portion of Solano Avenue too. So working together with the developer, the county, and the city of Napa, um, I think this is a, a great opportunity to, um, you know, to work together next year, um, and just putting this out, because I, you were questioning the CIF funds that might be available. So I just wanna say, there's a lot of benefit, and there's a lot of need to approach that next year, in the fact that we're putting it off this year. We could have done some patchwork, but it didn't seem to me that the patchwork really allows for a road project to have the best longevity. So that's why we're denying the lesser to gain the greater, and that's, that's the waiting game that we're, we're working on here. I gotta make a shout-out for Partridge Road, um, and I don't mean to be, you know, District Two centric, but, um, the PCI, it's gotta be really bad on Partridge Road. Do you happen to know what that is?
Single digits?
Yeah, I mean.
Well, actually, and I will say it depends on what park, because part of Partridge has been repaved and, and part of it hasn't been touched.
Correct.
But the part that hasn't been touched, it, it certainly is a low number, actually, I could look it up.
It's, it's, it's incredibly poor, um, to the point where it's kind of shocking. And so not only do we have residents up there, but you also have cyclists, and people are walking up there, up and down that hill, so there's a safety measure. And I, I was gonna ask that too, because Vision Zero is a commitment county-wide in terms of eliminating severe and fatal accidents, if that's also in the Street Saver, uh, calculations, in, including, you know, traffic counting. Because that's gotta be, we, I understand we use the traffic counting, that makes sense in terms of an investment, but it doesn't, if it doesn't include the elements of Vision Zero, um, it, it doesn't, it seems like it's not, it's not addressing the whole issues as we're addressing here, that we need, we're committed to address.
So, um, couple, couple of thoughts, um, just going back to CFDs for a second, I, I will say where, where CFDs have been most successful is where you, you have what I call a closed community, where you don't have a lot of pass-through traffic, um, because people tend to not want to vote if their perception is the damage is being done by pass-through traffic. So, um, it does tend to work well, Circle Oaks, as an example.
Right.
Nobody goes into Circle Oaks except the people who live in Circle Oaks, so, you know, those, those sort of things. Coming back to, um, to bike safety, as I'm, as I mentioned, with any of our projects, we do look at bike and pedestrian safety, um, associated with them, but we are basically limited to the pavement that exists. Once you get into widening even a little bit, you change the whole nature of the project in terms of your SEQA evaluation, and just in terms of, of, um, general cost. So we do what we have with, um, the pavement that makes sense. I think you and I have talked about this when, years ago, when we started planning the Salvador paving project, um, it was actually my idea, um, I said, we ought, we ought to add a bike pa, you know, we ought to add a bike there, uh, because it's a deep ditch and whatnot, um, and it doubled the cost of the project, and ultimately, we walked away from it. This is literally, and you see in my spreadsheet, there's literally a zero-sum game, anytime you, um, you put money into something, you've gotta take money out of something else. So, you know, ultimately, that's a, that's a board policy decision, we could have done the bike lane on Salvador, and I would have had to delete El Centro, as an example.
And I would have supported that, to be frank, and you and I have to agree to disagree, and I reached out to Supervisor Cottrell at the time, it's still not an ideal situation, it was an opportunity missed, in my opinion, to not widen Salvador at that, that point. Just for vehicle safety, let alone bicycle safety, it was a perfect connector, but you're gonna be sorry you brought that one up, because that's a little bit a thorn in my side.
It, it's ultimately a policy decision, but we, we've been able to get our, for instance, our PCI from forty-five to fifty-five, based on the amount of paving that we've been able to do. If we want to make every project, uh, you know, this is a little bit pejorative, but if we want to make every project twice as expensive, then we're gonna be doing half the paving.
Yeah, and I'm not asking every project to be twice expensive, but that, that specific stretch is, is kind, it's, it's a little scary, especially at night in a storm, it's just, there's cars going to that ditch and it's unsafe. But I hear what you're saying, and, and all, we need to be smart about it, but I'm glad you were looking at that, um, in terms of the Vision Zero. Thank you for adding the, the rumble strips on, on Silverado and the, uh, green striping, um, and I just appreciate your great work, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm gonna step in here, um, I know Supervisor Ramos, you have some comments, as do you Supervisor Manfree. I need to leave at this point, and, um, I've checked with, uh, County Council, and we can move our closed session items until the next, um, meeting. Just wanna make, look at Supervisor, uh, CEO also up and make sure we're clear on that. Okay, so, and that leaves time for this, and there is lunch available for folks, is that correct? Okay, so Vice Chair Manfree, it's all yours.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we're just gonna keep on going, right, where we're losing Ann here. Supervisor Ramos?
Thank you so much. And a couple of questions in regards to, in the capital improvement fund, um, you said the, the balance that's available for, allocated for roads is seven million, is that correct?
The, yes, of the twenty, of the twenty million dollars that the board designated for roads several years ago, thirteen million has been spent, seven million has not.
And how much of those are PG&E?
That's, PG&E is separate, that was, that was a separate.
That was the nineteen point two million, whatever?
Six, sixteen.
Yeah, uh, close.
Yeah.
Um, how much of PG&E has been spent to date?
All, all but a couple hundred thousand.
And then, uh, are any of these feedback, FEMA, um, holdback funds?
Um.
Of the, of the seven, of the seven million remaining, are any of those FEMA?
No.
Dollars we put in waiting for reimbursement?
No.
Okay. And then, um, my next question, um, on American Canyon Road, I see that there's just overlay on American Canyon Road in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and on your spreadsheet, you say to the Sonoma County line, that'd be great if you would, in fact, pave all of District Five through American Canyon at twenty-nine. I don't think that's what you intended, so you might want to change that to the Solano County line. But I see that it's overlay, and I'm wondering, um, you know, we've had subsidence there, um, there were some, there was some work to be done, but we still have moisture that is coming onto the roadway that is probably gonna get us to more subsidence. So, um, how, how, at what intervals are, is your team gonna go out and true up and see really the whole scope of it? Because it's, it's not likely to simply be an overlay project.
Yeah, with, with every line on this spreadsheet, really, it, it's, um, um, it's a, I don't wanna call it a guess, 'cause it, it's more, it, it's an educated estimate of what we think we will likely need to do when we get to that stage. But as we approach each project, there's a geotechnical investigation associated, we'll, we'll do actually drilling, um, in various parts of the road to see what the subbase is looking like, we'll look for areas of subsidence, areas of drainage problems, culverts that may need to be replaced, um, bike safety elements to it. So really, every, every project, whether, whatever it says on the spreadsheet, starts with an engineering evaluation, and, and we go from there. And that's why some of these budget estimates are, are also just that, their estimates. We'll find sometimes, uh, uh, sometimes a project is cheaper than we expect it to be, sometimes it's more expensive, it just depends on what we, what we find. But, um, um, my engineer, my project manager, when they look at this, they start with a line on a spreadsheet, but then there's a very detailed analysis that, that goes into the design process before we're actually turning dirt.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, my last questions, um, circulate around the traffic mitigation fee program in the Napa Valley Business Park. Based upon our last report that we had, we have a current balance, I think of a hundred and seventy-one thousand, somewhere, uh, around there, unless some new monies have, have come in. And I see that the, the, the project, um, for the Dublin Sasco Ferry Roundabout, it says an estimated cost in this report of six-point-six million?
That's, that's a good number, yeah.
That's a good number?
Yeah.
Okay. So when will we hear back? Because obviously, the, the TMF can't, can't pay for it.
Right.
We only have seven million dollars in roads that is available of the total amount, we've got a six-point-six million dollar cost on this, and, and that's a, that is a regional, that is a, an intersection of regional importance as an employer. Every employee that's leaving, uh, South Campus is pretty much coming out of that intersection right there, and, and the backups are really being felt, and not allowing the, the full utilization of the Sasco Junction, uh, roundabout. So when will we hear back on, on a plan for, for funding there?
So, um, one other piece of your math, which is, is actually, well, anyway, so the, the balance in the, the traffic mitigation fund, so just by, by background, the traffic mitigation fund started, I think, in nineteen eighty-nine or so, and essentially, every time someone builds something new out in the airport industrial area, they pay a fee into the TMF. So that fund has been collecting money for a decade, and really, that, that fund is what built Devlin Road. And at various stages, as the board was interested in making sure that pieces of Devlin Road got built, they did in fact, um, front the money to the TMF, and then over time, the TMF, um, paid it, uh, paid it back. So about three or four years ago, uh, the TMF was actually in a positive state, um, it was not enough to build this roundabout, but it was in a positive state. There is actually a, the total cost was two-point-nine million, although I think it was one-point-five million. Anyway, the TMF had to pay a certain amount to, uh, the big Sasco. So the balance that you show in the TMF, uh, which I think is about four-hundred thousand dollars right now, actually doesn't reflect that loan, so it's actually negative right now. So, so again, the, the logic, the, the, the logic was that if the board wanted to accelerate the, um, the roundabout, um, and I think when we started design on the roundabout several years ago, I believe, uh, that was the intent, that the CIF, again, would, would pre-fund that money, and the, the TMF probably over about five years would pay that money back. So I still haven't answered your question, which is that...
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna interject here and say, I, I think we're, we're a bit off-topic here on, as it relates to the Measure U presentation, I really would love for this to come back, I think that the TMF, we have long, a, a long, long desire of mine, has been to have, uh, a traffic impact fee program countywide, we still haven't gotten to that. And the one that we have here at the Business Park certainly does need work, um, if, if what we had anticipated that to, uh, be able to shoulder is not coming to fruition, um, and it's putting, and it's having, uh, a negative impact upon the, the CIF. So I would ask that this part of the TMF, and any, uh, projects related to, uh, the traffic mitigation fund, come back at a later time for a presentation. You know, I would say, outside of just necessarily the budget conversation, that's more of a policy question of, uh, what we're going to do to, to make that sustainable, knowing that it is, um, I do, I do remember the loans, and I know that they're, that, that we did make some considerations, um, there going forward, so I would just ask that that come back at a later time.
Yeah, if, if I could, the, the TMF is actually doing what it's supposed to do, it's supposed to collect money from development over time, and, and then building the projects is a timing issue, the, the CIF is really more of the discussion.
Sure. My next question is on the Measure U bonding.
Yes.
Are those bonds that get issued by us, or through, uh, the CMA, through NVTA?
NVTA.
So it wouldn't be against our bonding capacity, or how does, what impact would that have?
Yeah, you're asking the wrong person on that one.
So, I guess I, um, I had, I had made a referral and asked the staff to, you know, get together with the debt committee and look at bonding in terms of the projects that we want to do, and I think that that's a, an additional, um, question we need answered, if this bonding capacity of Measure U is going to affect our ability to issue, um, bonds when it comes to our, our facilities plan.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I will add, actually, that, uh, first off, NVTA will be the bonding agent, and because that money is secured against future Measure U revenues, I don't believe it has any impact on the, on the county, but obviously, we'll need to check.
And I want to say, that is my understanding too, and, um, pretty pos, pretty sure that is absolutely correct, it will impact the county's potential for bonding.
NVTA's intent is to issue revenue-backed bonds, so they will be totally dependent on the taxes that are generated and paid, they will not be a general fund, which would be how we would be evaluating and be our debt rating. NVTA's debt rating will be tied with the county's debt rating though, because they are a county-wide entity, um, so the two will play off of each other, but it will not affect our capacity, because they are separate funded and intent bond.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, I was the last one with, uh, uh, comments. I think, uh, I, that we, um, we've received the presentation on the Measure U funding at this point, and, and, uh, I think the only thing I really want to say, uh, is that I appreciate the ongoing work that you've been doing around Ridgecrest Drive and the slide in Circle Oaks. And in case there's anyone watching, uh, I just wanted to give you an opportunity, if there's anything you want to say to that related to funding opportunities, Measure U or timing, because it's been an ongoing issue that a lot of people are concerned about.
Uh, sure, just specifically with Ridge, Ridgecrest, uh, for background, there was a, a slide, um, um, below Ridgecrest Drive and above, uh, Country Club Lane, uh, slide originated on private property, but it did, uh, take a piece of our road, um, with it, so, um, the board authorized, um, emergency funding, um, for that, and a number of other slides that resulted, um, from the storms in, uh, February. We've completed our geotechnical investigations, um, and we'll be completing a design here shortly, and, uh, going out to bid for their construction contract, and hopefully, we'll be, uh, building a retaining wall that will hold our road in place, and obviously, we'll, uh, we'll repave the road as well. In conjunction with that, the, uh, property owner at fifty Ridgecrest, um, has his driveway that he needs to rebuild, and so he'll need a retaining wall below his driveway, which will somehow tie in with ours, we'll obviously, uh, work with him, um, or his, uh, professionals, um, and that should hold the road and his driveway in place. The, the slide below that, um, is, um, is with the private property owners to decide what they want to do with it.
Okay, thank you so much for addressing that one.
Sure.
So, yeah, and thanks everyone for this thoughtful conversation on, on our, the state of our roads and where we're going from here, it's kind of a road pun. Um, and I, I think I want to put a pin, I want to put a pin in the road improvement districts, I know I've talked to you, uh, Mr. Letter, about that before, I think it's an interesting idea, maybe it could work in some of our neighborhoods and offs, and allow us to free up some funding for other places, but I know that it's complicated, the votes are weighted, it's, um, not necessarily easy, it's something Ginny Sims actually lobbied me and suggested years ago, um, about, but, uh, but I think it's a conversation we might just kind of, uh, keep rolling forward for a little while. So with that, I will open this up for public comment, is there anyone in the room who wishes to comment on the topic we're discussing? Seeing no one, is there anyone on the phones? No? We do still have a few viewers on YouTube, so I know someone somewhere is watching. We do still have a few viewers on YouTube, so I know someone somewhere is watching us. Um, so with that, uh, I will, uh, look for a vote on this. Do we have a motion in a second?
Yeah, so moved, um...
To, uh, to adopt a resi...
Adopt a resolution approving the Measure U five-year project list.
Yeah. Great.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Uh, with that, the motion passes unanimously.
Yeah. Thank you all for your time. I really do enjoy talking about this, so, sorry, sorry I held you so long.
Great. Great. Yeah, obviously a topic we, we need to do a lot of talking about. Okay, so, um, so we have nothing on special districts. I think we're at the end of the agenda. I can, can I? Can I do this? Can I adjourn this meeting? All right, this meeting is adjourned.
Chair, I would continue the closed session items to a later meeting.
Oh, right. Yes, and we are continuing the closed session items to a later meeting today. And now I will adjourn the meeting.